Welcome Littleton to the Select Board meeting for Monday, August 12th. We're going to start with an executive session and plan to be back at 6:30. So is there a motion for the executive session?
Motion to go into executive session. The purpose of...
Let me, I don't have it.
Very good.
Move that the Select Board vote to enter into Executive Session Number Two pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, police. The Select Board will adjourn to Executive Session and reconvene in open session after the executive session.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Gary. A roll call vote. Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. DeCose?
Aye.
Lord House?
Yes.
Karen?
Morrison?
Aye.
And Chairs in favor, I will be back around 6:30, Littleton. Thank you. So welcome back. We are, resume our regular meeting. We'll start with the...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll begin with, we'll read the mail. We have a joint meeting with the Finance Committee at 6:35 to approve the financial policy and a reserve fund transfer. We have a bunch of department updates for police, town clerk, DPW, Parks and Rec, and Fire Department at 7:00. 7:45 we'll do public input. 8 o'clock we'll do appointments to the PMBC and the LCTV Advisory Committee. Then we have licensing, one day liquor licenses for dirigible. 8:15 we'll hold a public hearing on a dog, dangerous and nuisance dog. 9 o'clock Select Board discussions, bikes not bombs, the orchard and special town meeting, Town Administrator updates for a side letter for the deputy police chief and police lieutenant. And 9:40 we'll be doing minutes and hopefully adjourning on time. You want to start with the mail?
Sure. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to remind everybody out there that we do have some available vacancies on various town boards. We've got Agricultural Commission, Clean Lakes Committee, Conservation Commission, Cultural Council, Economic Development Committee, Historical Commission, LCTV, Littleton Community Television Advisory Committee, Master Plan Implementation Committee, Permanent Municipal Building Committee, Nagog Hill Orchard Ad Hoc Working Group, Taxation Aid Committee, Transportation Advisory Council, and a zoning vote of appeals. I would like to encourage everyone to sign up to receive public notifications for the Town of Littleton. Go to www.littletonma.org/subscribe and get up to date on community impacts, transportation issues, public health concerns, town events, town meeting changes, public safety activity. Some very, very generous individuals out there. We have a gift of $200 from Eleanor Gentlemen for EHS Outreach and Program Gift Funds. And we also have the hard work from the friends on the Littleton Council on Aging, an $850 gift for the work that they've done to raise money for the senior breakfasts. And like to make everyone, everyone notice that on August 17th, from 5:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., the Community Emergency Response Team will be doing training on Oak Hill Road. Be aware that there will be first responder activities on Oak Hill Road near the entrance to the Oak Hill Reservation. The entrance parking area will be closed. All trails will remain open, though, to the public via the Harvard Road entrance. And that's it for mail.
Finance Committee, are you in session?
We are in session.
Okay. So you want to drive the discussions?
Sure. First, I'd like to thank the Select Board for letting me bring this back to the committee this time for the policy. I missed the July 15th meeting. I watched it. There were, there was a good discussion that was had, but I noticed that there wasn't many answers to questions that came up. And you see in the memo that I wrote, answers a lot of the questions that were there, and it talks a little bit more about general stabilization and the things that drives general stabilization, put it that way. I did meet with Mark, and I believe he was okay with these changes, but we can still discuss them if you'd like. I'd leave it to the pleasure of the Board how you'd like to move forward with these things.
May I ask, just for both Chairs, we just, we had the minutes first, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So this is the minutes of the July 10th.
The minutes for the working group, the policy working group from July 10th. They were sent around. Members of the, I think we're all here. Have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Have a second?
Second.
We need somebody.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Would the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Working group, yep?
Aye.
unanimous. So the first thing with general stabilization, the Board and the Finance Committee at the July 15th meeting said a recommend, changed it to read a recommended minimum deposit of $100,000. And the working group, when we met on this, if you remember, the original policy was a 5% max on the account. There's a long history with that stabilization account. The original policy was a 3%, because that's what the state was looking for way back when, probably in the mid, say around 2015 or so. The state changed their guidance to 5%. We changed the policy to 5%. And it took us a while to get up to that 5% limit. Probably the first budget that Cheryl did as Finance Director, so we're talking probably around 2019 or so. We were over the 5%. She was a strong advocate for stabilization, and she continued to make deposits. I was kind of, you know, the policy says this, but we're still doing this, why are we doing this? And again, she was an advocate for it. I now look back at that and say, that was a good thing that she did that. So on the three budgets she put together, she made deposits to there, probably about $300,000 apiece. Alicia, Alicia, Alicia. In the one budget that she did, she also made a deposit into it. Patty also made a deposit into it. Last year, we didn't, because we were over. And you see in the memo that I wrote, 5% minimum is really not much money. I put the example of Indian Hill. We're doing cosmetic changes to Indian Hill for $3 million, and that's how we're going to support the town for any disaster. At 5% of our budget is $3 million bucks. It's not enough. The working group came up with a 10% max on the account, continued to make $100,000 deposits. Mark voiced his concern to me that it was kind of arbitrary where the $100,000 was coming from, and what's the 10%? We met, we talked about it, and I think the language that we're putting in, or that I'm recommending that we change it to, is that in budget years where the balance of the fund is already greater than the 5% minimum noted in number one above, a minimum deposit of $100,000 shall be made from available free cash as outlined in Section 12, Item A, until the balance of the account reaches a target level of 8%. Further contributions to the account, once over the 8% target, are optional. So that was kind of from a discussion that we had, and I'm asking that we add this language to the policy and take out the word "recommended," if that's okay with everyone.
So like, the policy would be a minimum deposit of $100,000, not a recommended minimum deposit?
Correct.
Until the 8% Mark has had.
Until we hit the 8%, and then it's, depending on how much money we have. I just, like I mentioned in the memo, I don't look at the stabilization, hopefully we never have to touch it, put it that way, right? So it's going to build up. Having that 5% minimum, I think one of Mark's recommendations was, we'll just change the minimum to 8% or 10%. But if you have the 5% minimum balance there, if we ever do have to touch it, the buildup to get back to that 5% balance is a lot different than having to get it to the 8% or the 10% over that two-year period that the policy says. So at a time where the town's going to be stressed to having just come out of a disaster, say, the two-year period afterwards is going to be less of an impact, because we don't have to put as much money into stabilization to get it back. So that's the way I look at it, and I hope everybody looks at it the same way. Is that good with everybody? Finance Committee?
I'm okay with it.
Select Board?
So I was the one that was advocating for this, and I think, like Steve said, I was saying, I don't want to raise the number up to 8% if that's what we really wanted. Steve's explanation of just trying to get back to the 5% makes sense. The $100,000, I also thought was a rather arbitrary number that we were throwing in there. So I think the 8% target helps a lot from my perspective. It makes things much clearer what our goal is, rather than $100,000, throwing into the account $100,000 just seemed arbitrary. But now, we're saying we're throwing in $100,000 to reach the 8% number, so that's a target.
Yeah, I think the policy group, we, it was, I mean, the 5% is there, and it doesn't sound like it's going to move anytime soon, as far as the state's concerned.
I don't know whether the state has a recommendation for general stabilization anymore, because back then, that was the only stabilization account.
Right, they're all over the place now.
Now it's, they've opened it up, and you can have all these special stabilization accounts. So I don't think they have a, and Ryan did, probably no better than me.
Yeah, I agree, I don't think they have a recommendation anymore to it.
So it's really about community, our health, our financial health, because, so the 5%, if we just left it at 5% and we had an emergency and we had to go down to 2%, or we pulled that money out, we'd be fighting to get it back up to 5. Is that what you're saying?
We'd be fighting to get it back up to 8.
Now we go down to 5, we're still in very healthy situation.
But realistically, I mean, at 5%, you're talking $3 million.
We are.
That's not a lot of money for an emergency. And again, hopefully it's never needed, but it's there.
Yeah.
And also, it counts with the rating agencies. It's part of your reserve levels. They look favorably on reserves, of course. The second change that the two committees made on the July 15th was a change to Section 25. It says, the new language is the unspent amount of the school appropriation will be deposited. It was just saying, adding the word appropriation there, so that's fine. The next one, capital exclusion from special stabilization accounts. There was a turn that's used in that section that said "general fund capital plan." And it was a question that came up from somebody, that's probably you, that says, what is a general fund capital plan? So the people in the working group, and I kind of talked about this at those sessions, there was a lot of language in this policy, and we thought we got it all. Basically, it was trying to get from point A to point B. So now we're going from point B to point C, basically. So a lot of the language, and there was a lot of redlined items in that original policy that was done that was just changing of language. There was some things that need to be made clear. One of Mark's first suggestions was putting the pit glossary in the back. And at first, I says, oh, we're going to kill the policy by adding all this stuff to it, but now I see it. I thank you. This policy needs, and I think your discussion showed it on the 15th, this policy needs to be able to be understood, because boards change. We have, you know, three relatively new members here, Select Board change. People need to understand this policy. So I can go through, so the general fund capital plan, way back when, when we were transitioning to using free cash instead of borrowing for capital, there was a time period where we weren't generating enough free cash. So we were spending it in year one. Year two, we didn't hit that second piece of that free cash equation. We didn't have enough money. So there was still capital needs. So what we did was, we took general fund money from the decrease in the debt service, which was all capital, and we put it to the capital plan. So one of the things that we came up with was, we want, we don't want to rely on the general fund to fund capital. We want to get away from that. So we put this 1% in there as kind of a penalty to ourselves to say, okay, you're going to fund something out of the general fund, you're going to put 1% of that total into capital stabilization, because we were trying to build up capital stabilization at that point. It wasn't much money, I think that most we used, put $2,000, $3,000 in it, which is 1% of the amount we spent, but it was still something. So that's what a general fund capital plan is. The new language, I changed it to say a minimum appropriation to the capital stabilization fund. We've made annually an amount of at least 1% of the total amount of capital purchases made from the general fund as a reason appropriate. It's clear, people should understand that now. It's not just Steve speak. Section 22, debt exclusion. Again, I think it was Mark that, there's two pieces to this. This first piece in that exclusion says that we'll use a debt exclusion stabilization account to pay for construction costs for excluded projects. Second piece says we will pay the debt service for excluded projects. There was some conversation about getting rid of one, because we don't do it, and making two one, and you decided to flip them, and I think we decided to keep two. So what I did is, I kept it the way it was, with the two pieces in there, and I added a footnote at the bottom referencing the town meeting vote and the article itself, so that the use of the debt exclusion account is right in the policy now. It's the two pieces. The only reason we haven't done that first piece is we haven't had an excluded project since we did the debt exclusion account. That's why. So in Section 21, I added that same kind of footnote to the capital stabilization fund, so it references the article on the use of the capital stabilization fund. And the same thing in 25 for the new school building stabilization fund. Again, reference the article and put the language in the footnote as to exactly what it can be used for. As I was doing that and rereading the policy one last time, I did come up with this new language in Section 12. So we, in Section 25, we said that any unspent money from the school appropriation that's turned back to the town after it's certified, and the town agrees to put it to the school building stabilization fund. But there was nothing back in the free cash thing that said, this is what we're going to do. That's one of the allowable things. So I added this language above, you know how it goes, A, B, C, D, and those step pieces right above that. So it's whatever free cash is certified by, right off the top goes the school money that they contributed to that to go to the school building stabilization fund. And then that net amount, we run through the A, B, C, Ds. The only caveat to this, and I ran this past Justin, so he knew, was that in a year that we don't regenerate free cash, which hasn't happened in years, if that net amount after we have the free cash certified, we take out the school piece, if that amount isn't at the 5% minimum, then we don't make that transfer. The chances of that happening are slim, but I think that safety net had to be there. And then I reference back to Section 11, to Section 25, so they both look at each other. So you can look to 25, and it says, go to 11, and you go to 11, and it says, go look at 25. So hopefully, this answers the questions that came up in that meeting, and hopefully it still makes the policy a little clearer for the next time. Is that okay with everyone? I thank you.
To thank the Policy Committee meeting, too, because that was, it's not the most exciting document to be working on.
But it's important.
And it's critical. Every single member of these two committees and schools should understand why money goes where it goes.
And next year, when we look at it, and there could be some language, I've been talking to Justin about some of the revenue pieces, the next iteration, really, I mean, when we sit down in that policy group, it's, if people don't really understand it, we need to make the language in there so people understand it. Because I'm not always going to be here. Fred's not always going to be here. I think people change, and we need to make sure that we're covered. So I guess I would look for a motion from the two boards to approve the amended financial management policy. So I move that the Select Board vote to approve the amended financial policy.
Second?
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a motion, FIMCOM?
Make a motion that the Finance Committee approve the amended financial management policy.
Have a motion?
Have a second?
Second.
Second by Sanjay. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
So through the Chair, so Justin, did the, so the school has looked at this?
So...
Some of the changes we're seeing.
Yes, the school committee hasn't had a meeting, the school meeting else, we don't have one until, or we have at some point in November. The timing of this is a bit cumbersome, since your boards meet frequently, and we don't, really only Section 25 applies to us, and I think it's, I think it's worth it just to find. We'll have to cross it every time I get there. I hope that you folks don't have to see this again with an amendment, but I can't promise that. That's it all.
Okay. Thank you. The reserve fund transfer?
All right. So I sent something out later this afternoon. My apologies for the lateness of this to both the Select Board and the Finance Committee. So this is a request for reserve fund transfer for two specific items. The first is for repairs at Nagog Hill Orchard. We've attached a quote from Classic Construction. It's under the state contract, so, and that amount for those repairs is $18,926. So that reflects the requested repairs that have been put forward by the Nagog Hill Ad Hoc Working Group. I would note, the group did also ask to remove some of the items that were up on the second floor. That is not included in this, because then the price really skyrocketed. So we wanted to kind of scale that back, and speaking with Matthew, we made a decision to scale that back and present to you what you have before you, which is really just tightening up the buildings for security's sake. So that's the first item. The second item is a $55,000 item for the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, otherwise known as MAPC, for community engagement regarding the future planning of the Nagog Hill Orchard. We have, we're going to be giving an update, or the Board will be giving an update later in this meeting regarding the RFP for leasing, so that's pretty well along. And I think what this is, this effort is to try to do something similar for what we did with the MBTA communities. Many of you who are here tonight were at that meeting here in this room, and what, you know, what that engagement meant, and trying to educate the public about the challenges that we had and why we were moving forward with, and what other alternative sites we were looking at for, sites that could be zoned for MBTA zoning, and ultimately, that was successful. So I think what we're looking to do here is something similar to that, and I'd leave it to Jim or Matthew, if you guys want to expand, or Karen, anything else on. So yeah, I think the charge to us was to get this information back to the FIMCOM and make the request to you to make a transfer from the reserve fund balance, because these are things that up until when we went to town meeting, and Article 11 was rejected by just a few votes, but nonetheless, we have to sort of regroup and come up with another plan, and these are the interim steps that we're putting in place to help us get through.
Mr. Chair?
So I can just give some very quick context on those, these two numbers. The repairs are the very bare minimum to keep the buildings intact for the next six months. There's nothing more than patching holes. The MAPC, honestly, I saw it for the first time this afternoon, it came in much higher than I expected. I guess, looking at it as an investment in the future of the property, you know, if we don't sell it, the town is on the hook for doing much more expensive repairs or, you know, maintenance on the property. So we can discuss how to balance those costs, but that's where we're at.
And if I may, if I could just add to what Matthew said, too. Some of what we're looking to also apply for a grant to offset the cost of the MAPC work. So they've, I think they said, one of the community compact grants opens up on the 19th. MAPC works closely with the state, so we may be able to put together an application for this. I think there's a lot of reasons as to why they might support that, but I think we can make that commitment to you that we'd be doing that to knock that amount down. Thank you.
So does our approving this help us or hurt us in the grant process? If we've already got the money approved, why am I going to give you a grant?
Right, right.
So I'm just asking, does...
Sure, sure. I think it depends on how you write the grant, Fred. You know, like to say that, you know, that the commitment was made to go for it, but to go for and pursue the grant. At the same time, we feel like we need to take this action now to be able to kick this off. We can't, you know, we can't really wait too much more, because, you know, the orchard is not like wine. It's not going to get better with more time. We need to be able to come up with a plan and have that engagement. So I think, if anything, it demonstrates a certain level of seriousness on it, and, you know, I think we just need to continue to move ahead.
What's the timeframe for this?
For the grant? I think it's probably, I think it's like a, I'd have to check. It opens on the 19th, and then from there, usually, I think it's a month or two months that we'll...
And what about MAPC? What's the timeframe for them?
Yes, that's the timeframe for them. So the work for Classic, I think, you know, once, you know, once we get the okay with this, they can, they can pretty much start, you know, start quickly on that.
We would be wanting to engage with MAPC in the run-up to Springtown Meeting. So we would bring an article to Springtown Meeting to sell the property, and this process would guide us through collecting feedback from residents who are opposed to it or on the fence about it, as well as giving information out about why it's the best, the best choice.
If the lease doesn't produce.
If the lease doesn't, and we're going to talk later, issuing an RFP for lease, if the lease doesn't pan out.
I think the timeframe for engaging MAPC is, we, like, the public outreach won't be until like January or so, I think, right? But we need to get them on board early so that we can start the process.
Okay. Thank you.
And who's driving the grant?
Our office, yes.
The office, yeah.
Could you just...
Could you just explain, I apologize, but what exactly are we getting from the M-?
MAPC.
Yeah, what do we get?
Matthew, do you want to?
Yeah, sure. So they are going to work with us to, they're going to facilitate a series of public meetings, and the goal of those is to create, to educate, to get feedback from the, from the public about what their desires are, or what their objections are, or their, their sort of concerns are about selling the orchard. And also quantify some criteria that we want to apply towards the RFP for sale, so that when we evaluate the respondents to that RFP, those criteria are things that the residents have set in stone, as like, these are the things that we need from a purchaser of the orchard in order to, in order for them to succeed, in order for us to approve it. In addition, there's going to be a fair amount of outreach of information going out from those sessions to the public. I think that we've heard a lot from several people in the meetings over the last few months, that, you know, more, more education of the public would have meant that that article in the fall would have passed, because it only failed by a few votes. And so, just like the MBTA process, everyone felt really strongly that it failed, it failed, and then we engaged with the public and had information sessions, and it was very successful, and it passed. And it wasn't just because of the information sessions, I think it was also because the warrant article was shaped by those sessions to be sort of more attractive and more tolerable or palatable for the public.
Okay. Is there any, you said we're not going to engage then until January?
No, we're actually going to start working immediately on, on scoping and deciding what the goals are and how we're going to approach it.
The outreach sessions won't be until more than-
Yeah, the public outreach won't be till January.
It's November, December.
Oh, does it say November, December in that? Okay.
And I think maybe it's targeted, targeted January, February, they'd be preparing a report, and additional educational activities prior to town meeting.
Okay. And the urgency on the $50,000, is it just convenient that we're talking about it, so we added it? Or is there an urgency on the $50,000 between now and January?
I think it would be, the urgency would be to have it now, so that we're, you know, putting the money aside and making the investment toward the community engagement side of things. So I think-
So what would it be spent on between now and when you engage the MAPC?
So, engaging immediately.
Well, we would begin the process of working with them this month, if we approve this.
So we'd start spending the money with them?
Yeah.
Okay, so, all right, I'm fine, okay.
And I think, when we spoke to them, they felt like, you know, we came to them saying we want to get this done by the Fall Town Meeting, and they sort of laughed in our face. So I think that they felt like the Springtown meeting was a very reasonable, even they felt like, we can probably do it by the Springtown meeting. I do think that we will be working with them straight through to the Springtown meeting.
So this is really seed money to get it going?
I mean, it's the, it's the entire cost of all their engagement from now through Springtown meeting.
Okay.
Like, I don't have any idea when we're going to spend it, like, whether it's all upfront or not.
Yeah, no, no, I think it'd be, it's usually done based on the hours that they're, that they're working on, how many meetings they conduct, so it's usually, you know, it's not all upfront, it would be, you know, as they progress.
So we'll spend it over the next six months.
Okay, so we're just not getting on their calendar to do something in there, or we're actually starting to work with them.
Yes.
Is there a way to get something a little more formal as to what they're going to deliver to us? The bullet points, kind of just high level?
We're going to have to have a contract. It's just, I think, for the purposes of tonight, knowing, you know, we're in the summer, we wanted to have something, you know, have, have some sort of scope of work, and we could at least come-
Right. But to vote on something for $55,000 when we don't exactly know what we're getting, there's risk for it to go up.
So I believe, right, so we'll still vote on the contract, like, I think that we will be bound by the transfer, but the Select Board would have to approve the contract with all the details, hourly rates, and all the deliverables in it.
All right, so this is just a request for the funding for it.
But it's putting for $55,000 that could easily climb up to more than that? As you said, it's billed hourly.
So I think the, I mean, I think the thing is that we'd be saying to MAPC that this would be a not to exceed number, as well as to pursue the grant.
I think they make a mention of that, though, so if-
They do, but-
They said, if that's not enough, then they'll just give us less. So, we're giving you the money to make that call, but if then they try and charge more, or if they run the project, then we can get less for that same policy.
I think they're being probably a bit conservative. I mean, having worked with a lot of these vendors in the past, it's a matter of them understanding that there are only so many resources that are available, and right now, that cap won't exceed $55,000. So, and as we refine the contract, we'll be working with Matthew and Karen to be able to come to terms with that. But, you know, you're right, it does need to be refined some more, but, you know, I don't, I'm not worried about going over that.
I don't think that's unusual. I think the contract we had with the MBTA consultant was the same, and when we were doing the contracts with the open space planning, I think there was the same type of contract where, you know, there are $30,000, whatever, contract number out there, and they're all billing hourly.
So it's less about the total amount for me, it's more about just understanding what we would get for it. And it seems like we have, like, five bullet points that suggest kind of some things that we might see in each of the coming months, but it's not entirely clear. They said, I think at one point, it said something along the lines of, we'll do some outreach, might be digital, might be something else. So it just seems like there's a lot to be interpreted from it, and if we postpone the vote for a short period of time, I mean, at least then they can put something together. But I don't know if they're willing to put together that proposal rather than just a, you know, email summary.
We also have to take into consideration here, the MAPC, the relationship that, they have a, they have a defined number of communities that they work with. Littleton is in one of them. It was next door, right in Westford. They don't, they don't fall in Metropolitan Area Planning Council Commission, they fall, it's out of lower, what is it?
I don't know, they have a lower greater planning.
Now, yeah, so, but, but the point is, the relationship has been established with Littleton, with MAPC for decades, and it's something that, I understand that there is some skepticism in regards to the specificities, but they're excited about, they're excited about the project. I mean, they, they want to see, they want to see, they want to see it to be successful. So we don't anticipate anything, anything, you know, going, going above that $55,000. And the con, as Ryan had said, there will be a scope that is going to define, it's a little tighter, but not much tighter, because it's going to give, give room for interpretation and flexibility.
I think of Jonathan's point, though, I mean, we did have a tighter scope when we approved a warning for the MBTA communities, we kind of understood, and we often do ask for more details or a better scope.
But that's a straight consultant. I mean, that consultant is high all over the state. This, the MAPC-
Right, so they're not going anywhere.
Is, is, is defined, and we are under their umbrella.
Right. Yeah, this is one of those, you know, we have a town meeting with Luis Canales, we have, we're running these side by side, I think we're being good stewards that way. We're running the lease, the RFP, to get, make sure, we're doing all we can to see if this, a last bit, bit effort to get this leased. So if we waited that process out for this, I don't, we would probably be talking about another year on top of this. So I, I'm not going to sit here, I won't say that they won't come back, or we won't come back for more money. That could very easily happen in January. All of a sudden, the scope, some of the outreach, we find that a lot of the public wants something else, they want a couple more meetings to discuss it. So, you know, it's not that uncharacteristic to have to come back to the Finance Committee for more money on something like this. I think this, this is going to kick it off and get it, get it running, so that we're, if this lease doesn't, doesn't work, we're going to have to speed this whole process up to get to, get to May, so. I mean, it'd be to having you guys come in, I guess, three, four times to talk about, you know, this $55,000.
I mean, we would have to rely on the Select Board to do the contract with the scope that's agreeable to them and the Nagog Working Group that's there. This is the funding for it. If it leaves some of your concerns, Jonathan, we could say $55,000 less the amount of grants received, read in the motion. That way, it's not 55 plus the grant, and manage it that way.
Yeah, I mean, again, for me, it's less about the total amount, it's more about understanding what we're asking for, and being able to measure our success. We just say, here's the $55,000, hopefully, we get something back from them. But knowing ahead of time that we expect, I think in there it talks about maybe four working sessions. So there's a couple of things highlighted, but we don't know what we're getting for those working sessions. And if there's a longstanding relationship, and they've had strong, I guess, work deliveries in the past, I mean, that's something that I don't have visibility on. But for me, when I, any of my business deals that I would be dealing with, I would want to know what I'm asking for, for what I'm paying. I wouldn't want just a couple bullet points, that something. So for me, I'm asking for the clarity, also because we got this this afternoon, right? So I read through it, and it's, it seems like it was trapped in last minute, I don't have a lot of information to make that vote.
So we got the number last minute.
Not blaming you guys for the delivery, it was in the email we got Friday afternoon, but, you know, it's, it's short.
We met with MAPC probably a month ago, and, and had a discussion of what we were looking for with the outreach sessions and things like that. And then they got back to us very recently on, you know, what, what they could do and what the cost would be. And we haven't went back and renegotiated what they proposed versus what we asked for yet. So that will be ongoing. All we know is, right now, it's, won't exceed this cost, right?
They also, they also, you know, this is something they've done before, something, they have, they have like a, they have a template or, you know, a structure that they can work from. So I would imagine that the contract we get from them is going to have a lot more detail on what the public sessions are going to consist of, what kinds of surveys they're going to do, what kind of information they're going to collect, you know, how many times they're going to meet with us. So I'm not, you know, I'm obviously going to be overseeing, I assume I'm going to be the one overseeing this, working with them. I think that they're pulling in the same direction that we are, as far as the goal. So I'm not, I'm not really concerned that they're not going to give us, like, good value, and I think if the hours do go over, like, we can structure the contract in a way so that we make sure we get a deliverable at each juncture, and, you know, we have alternate or, you know, add-ons that we don't go for if they, if they don't have the, they don't have hours to do them. I'm pretty confident we can do, we can structure it that way.
Have we considered any other vendors if we're just going for the outreach? I say this because I've recently done a couple surveys, I know it's the private sector, it's different, but they gave me a 15 or 20-page proposal, exactly what I'm getting, I got live feed on, you know, the surveys as they were going out. It was very clear on what I'm getting, and it was, you know, less significantly cheaper than this.
So, so we actually, we, we went out and we asked everywhere for, for this, this process, I guess you would call it. It's not just a survey, right? It's information gathering from the municipality and from the public, it's, you know, information, it's writing up documentation to distribute to the public at these sessions, and it's going to be crafting criteria, a specific criteria for a municipal, you know, like, lease or RFP for sale of a municipal property, which is not a common thing. In fact, MAPC was, we couldn't find anybody who would do it. MAPC was like, we can do some of this stuff, but not all of it. So this is specialized venue, a specialized, you know, process here. We couldn't find anyone else who was interested in doing the whole thing, and they have experience doing something just like this. But it's much more than a survey.
Okay. So it sounds like from your discussions, you have that. I just, I appreciate letting me ask other questions, because that is not apparent from what was given, from their, from their response.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of, like, backstory and context here, like, the last several years of trying to deal with this, this process and this property.
Again, this, the Select Board is going to have to go through the contract, make sure the deliverables are there, make sure we're getting what we're paying for. So whereas that little overview that was there has some details in it, their documents should be very detailed, and the, very much as end. So we have to rely on the Select Board for that.
So if we, if we don't find anyone to lease the orchard, do we sell it then?
We would like to, yeah.
We'd still have to vote. I mean, this Board still has to discuss it.
Go back to town meeting.
Potentially.
So I guess, when you said you met with them, and you guys were kind of pulling in the same direction, if, if we can't lease it, I just want to make sure we're not putting our thumb on the scale. I mean, we, we voted, the town voted not to sell it. It was close, I know that, but are they going to work with you guys to educate the community on selling the orchard? You know, are they, so-
Yeah. I mean, like, honestly, like, we are putting our thumb on the scale. Like, we, like, the, the working group spent several years, and we have tried to lease it four times now, or three times, this is the fourth, and the, the property is, is becoming derelict and disintegrating, because no one will take care of it, and the realities of the agricultural situation are that no one's going to run that as an orchard, and especially not leasing it. And it's, it's really a matter of, like, trying to come to, to bring the public along to the point where the experts who spent a couple years looking at this and trying to figure it out, came to the conclusion that the best thing that we can do for this property is to sell it. It's the highest and best use. So in my opinion, yeah, I'm putting my thumb on the scale, because I think that's what needs to happen.
Mike, you know, I've been outspoken probably to the other side of this, so I, and I think that's what we're doing with trying to get this leased, another year of trying to get this leased, basically, is what we're doing. And if, and if it, we don't get something that hits a home run here that's going to take care of that property, then, I mean, I'm, I'm at a point where I, I had to agree with the rest of the Board, or, you know, with, with Matthew's point. We have to get this back in front of the community and educate them as much as possible on, you know, what it looks like, what a sale looks like, and get as much community involvement. So this definitely wasn't something that we just stroke of a pen, and I know the Nagog Working Group worked a lot to get to that point in their recommendation, but-
So we're jumping a little ahead in the meeting, but we will be talking about the orchard later, we will be putting out an RFP for lease. If that, if we are successful in the lease, we don't have to necessarily go forward with the MAPC education and outreach, because then we have a disposition of the orchard, right, for some candidate for lease. This is like getting ready if, for the contingency that we don't get a lease.
Yeah. I appreciate the trend.
Sure. I think something that's getting lost here is that it's not just a one-way direction that we're, for which we're engaging MAPC, right? We want them, it's supposed to be a two-way street. So it's not just us educating the public on why we have to sell. It's about understanding from the public what the reservations are and what their priorities are for the community in terms of the disposition of the property, so that if we get to sell, if we get to that point, that we're crafting the RFP, we're craft, in such a way that it will have the highest likelihood of meeting those needs, or meeting those desires of the public. So, you know, yes, the thumb's on the scale, but it's also very much, we're trying to make sure that the way we structure this is as, is answering, is answerable to the public as, as we can be.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one quick question. So if the leasing were to happen, you know, all the money that we spend on this one would be wasted at that time?
We won't be spending most of the money. Most of it will be coming after. We, there'll be, there's probably limited engagement until the point where we know whether the leases, the leases are due back in about a month.
Yeah, we'll know by fall.
So we'll know well before town meeting. Most of the money will be spent after town meeting.
Okay.
We'll give it back, if we don't spend it.
And on the smaller piece of the reserve fund transfers, the $18,000 to basically put bubble gum on a leaky boat, assuming we're going to have to spend more money on the property, you're assuming that that will come back to either fall town meeting or to spring town meeting, rather than flowing back through the reserve fund? If we approve this tonight, that's 30% of our reserve fund, and we're a month into the year. So I'm just, is the thought process that if you guys decide, whoever decides that we need to spend more money to keep the buildings afloat, that'll come back to town meeting in a warrant article, or?
I think it's going to have to.
Okay.
I think, I think what'll, what may happen, if we do find someone to lease it, there may be some asks from them, which we had obviously come to Fall Town Meeting with.
Right.
If, if we don't lease it, and let's say we make it through the winter without any more major repairs, either we're going to have to put some investment in it in the spring, or, and/or after that, when we do go for the RFP for sale and we find someone to purchase it, they may have asks, and that would be, I would assume, next fall. But I think we would always try to bring it to-
Get it through the-
To town meeting and not through a reserve fund transfer, if possible.
We had talked about that through, in last, go around with the budget cycle, is waiting till the fall, but now- till the fall, but now it looks like we'll wait till the spring and run it through capital stabilization, put it through as a regular capital project.
Yeah.
And a lot of these are public safety.
Yes.
It's not, it's not just keeping the, keeping the things up. It's keeping kids out and that kind of thing.
Liability, reducing our liability.
Okay.
Okay, so we have two reserve fund transfers. One for 18,926 for repairs to the orchid building. Motion to approve.
Make a motion that we approve the reserve fund transfer for 18,000-
19,000.
19,000 or whatever it is for repairs to the structures.
Now, second?
Second.
Moving second in.
Do we have a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Yep. And then we have a second one, 55,000. We do it less than any grant funds received for MAPC for the planning sessions. Contract to be approved by the Board of Select, the Select Board, excuse me. Have a motion?
Sure, I'll move that we approve the reserve fund transfer for 55,000 to engage the MAPC.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Moving second and all in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have some quick things you want to add? I have some, a couple of quick, quick things. Town clerk wouldn't let us meet out there, so we have to do it here. We have four meeting minutes. I sent them around. We can do them all at once. November 1st, 23, February 6th, 24, May 7th, 24, and 7:15, 24. These are all joint sessions with the select board. Have a motion to approve.
Sure.
Moving second and all in favor? And we have one invoice to the Association of Town Finance Committees for $196 for our annual dues. Have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second and all in favor? The annual meeting is November 2nd, 24. We'll get more information about it. It's in Sharon. The sessions are very good, so we encourage in bond members to attend. Thank you.
My favorite motion, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion, second?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fred, don't turn the phone off on that whole Robert's voice.
Department updates, Police Department.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing us the evening time. Appreciate it. We're here to discuss Adam Zaprikopoulos. He's our new hire, our newest hire for the Littleton Police Department. A little background for this, we've been at full staff for a little while, which is a great thing for us. It's not that common policing right now, but we've got a great team, great department. And so we've been at 22 officers and our fiscal 25 budget afforded an additional personnel employee hire. So, well, with that, I was brought in in 2013. So over the last 10 years, I was a 13th officer in 2013. So we're 10 officers up in 10 years. I think that's a credit to the, the previous chiefs, the previous town leadership, the community just recognizing the, as the town grows, so does, so does the police department, so the needs of our agency. So we appreciate that. We want to come out and, you know, put that right in front of everyone and say thank you for this opportunity. I know Adam appreciates it, right? So he's here tonight. And a little bit about Adam. So we met Adam when he was 17 years old. Yeah, he was a high school senior at the Littleton High School and got an internship. So three days a week, Adam was at our station for the whole senior year. We were fortunate enough to have him and he did anything you can imagine. I had an internship my senior year, but he was sitting with dispatch, he was riding with officers. He was really someone who was just here to help and really started our relationship through that senior year. After he graduated, decided to stick with us, which we were happy about, became a part-time dispatcher. So went through all the training. We didn't have any full-time positions, but wanted to stick in, in with us and took on that role. And then we brought Adam in front of you in 2021, at the end of 2021, as a full-time dispatcher. So stuck with us, was working a ton of shifts. And we did have an opening in dispatch. He was too young to be a police officer. I think that was his ultimate goal, why we're here today. But in the profession, in the career field, public safety. So did an excellent job as a dispatcher. And then when this opportunity for a new hire came upon us, we opened up internally first for, for our hires. We opened up to the people we knew inside. We felt it was a great opportunity to offer to someone that we had a relationship with already, who we kind of knew fit with our team already. So Adam obviously applied and here we are today. Adam's week 14 in the police academy, the Lowell Police Academy. He's going to set to graduate in October and by all accounts, he's doing amazing. He's doing a great job. We're happy for him. Coming out in October, he'll start his FTO program. We'll get him on the road with some senior officers and establish his training for his, you know, his hopefully 32-year profession with us. So will he, you know? But again, you know, Adam grew up in town, his family's in town, high school. He's been part of our team. He's, he's developed the relationships and the friendships already in our department. He's, he's in college currently. He's working for his, his degree in criminal justice while working full-time. So it's something we're proud of Adam. And we're just happy to present him here tonight for you guys for a position for the full-time police officer. So that. If you have any questions for him, I'm sure he's ready for you. You know, he's, thank you all.
I have a question. Lieutenant Leonard, does, does he, do you smile? I don't see any teeth. Come on, relax.
I always last time, man.
Strike that from the record.
He does, he does. Gets along with everyone great, so, but smiles.
Through the, through the chair, just, you know, thank you for staying with Littleton. I mean, it's almost, it's almost old school to have a, an officer, you know, fire department individual that's in town, stays in town and develops. So thank you for that because you know all the streets, you know a lot of the, it's a, it's a big benefit right out of the gate. So thank you and-
Knows where all the bad stuff happens?
Yeah. Make sure you invite us to your graduation, please. That'd be fantastic.
Well, to that, to that end, you do know where all the stuff happens. And I'm not saying that you've ever done any of that, Adam. I'm sure they're teaching you a lot. I'm sure that the department and leadership has taught you a lot, but it, it can be as, as much of a curse as a blessing to patrol in, in your hometown. So just, you know, go in eyes wide open relative to that. I think you're a mature enough guy and I've known you a long time. And I'm really looking forward to seeing you continue to develop. Congratulations.
I'll just say congratulations and welcome. Thank you.
Thanks very much. I'm glad you're here.
You should ask him at least one question. What's your favorite color?
Red, sir. In the academy, he would feature to say, sir, yes, sir. You're not my favorite police officer.
He's already building bridges.
Fire county should order.
So, so thank you. Do a picture?
Yeah.
Well, let's, no votes, right?
I don't think there's a motion in this.
No, there's no motion.
Because he's just being gracious. So. We can take a picture.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
Yeah, he's got my phone. Hopefully it's, I'll smudge it.
Cover in the middle.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good job.
Welcome aboard.
Oh, yeah.
It's late, what's that? Monday through Friday, again? Must be Monday through Friday.
We'll send, we'll send, we'll send out. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll bring you something red.
Never alone with it.
Next up is the town clerk, approval of the warrant for the September primary.
Excuse me. Hey, Ryan. What's that? I said, hey, Ryan. Yeah.
I said, hit an N.
Hit N?
N.
E and D?
Yeah, there you go.
Next discussion?
And this is just a warrant for the primary?
Yeah.
Any discussion? Move that the select board vote to approve and sign the election warrant for the September 3rd, 2024 state primary.
Second.
By Matthew, second by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
DPW.
Johnny on the spot, Steve.
Okay.
Going to make us late.
I'll catch you back up real quick. Watch this. All right, what's on first? The easement. Good evening. Thank you, members of the board. Steve in the aisle, Director Public Works. First item of the three things tonight is grant of easement with Mass DOT. This, the final piece of the Foster Street project. And what this does is DOT is basically giving us an easement to maintain the soon-to-be constructed shared youth path under the Route 2 overpass. So typically, anything within the state layout falls on DOT. This being the large-scale project that it is, this has almost become the standard with DOT. So basically, once the project is turned back over to the town, we will then be responsible for maintenance and upkeep of the path under the Route 2 overpass. I know there's a lot of papers that go with this to say that, but that's the, the simple version.
It's like 50 feet by 100 or something like that?
So the state layout typically for a highway like that's 300 feet. So it's a little bit either side of the overpass and then under the overpass.
Okay. Any comments or?
This is to show them that we've got a project about to kick off.
That's great.
So this is good, good stuff.
Move that the select board vote to endorse a grant of easement from Mass DOT for the Foster Street Improvement Project as outlined in the attached documentation.
Second.
Move by Matthew, second by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
The second is approval of the contract with Weston and Sampson Engineers for the feasibility
study for the public works facility. I had included the scope of work and stuff with the memo, but it's basically, and I went through this process in Chelmsford with them, started in 2007. Similar, similar process. They'll come in, we'll analyze existing needs, current vehicles, equipment, personnel, take like a five-year and a 10-year lookout, see if they plug it into Matrix, tells us the square footage we need, you know, bathrooms we need, training rooms we need. And then basically see if we can renovate on-site or possibly look at outside properties, different options, either town-owned property or private property type of thing. And then at the end of this, about a 90-day start-to-finish timeline, then we'll come back to the board with a presentation on the findings.
Exciting.
What do you actually come out of this with? Do you come out with, you need a building X size and it's going to cost about Y to build?
Correct.
Will they identify locations as well in town?
Yeah, I'm going to, part of this is I'll work with them on either some town-owned property or some privately-owned property throughout the community. Try to identify some sites that would fit our needs.
Or rehabbing, or expanding the building, or rebuilding on that site or whatever?
Correct.
Okay, great.
And are we including the new facilities manager in this discussion?
Eric. I'm happy to bring him down if he wants to be part of the-
He does.
This level study.
He does.
No, that's fine. Absolutely.
Okay, great.
And through the chair, just, is, just knowing that you're going to need more space, there's no doubt about that. Is there a, do you have the possibility of being able to split your department into two locations? In other words, are you allowed to, is that a possibility? Where you potentially could have two pieces of property that you have, you have X here and?
Well, I guess anything's possible. I, I wouldn't want to do that.
Okay.
I'll go back to Chelmsford. Five different divisions in public works at the time. We're in five different locations. Extremely inefficient.
Okay.
Here I only got, you know, parks, highway and, you know, the admin staff. It's preferable that we're all in the same place.
Okay. It's good to know.
Yeah, as, as it is now, we have stuff stored, parley lumber, you know, when Light and Water bought the building, the one, the larger building. So all the stuff that's been stored outside for years, I can at least get undercover. But then for a couple days, spring and fall, we do the parade back and forth, you know, bringing. So the ultimate goal is to avoid stuff like that.
Okay.
If possible. But we'll see what shakes out.
I think I heard him ask for two more departments.
Bring them on. If that means more help, bring them on.
All right. Any other questions?
Has council seen this?
It's subject, any contract subject to council approval, right?
Correct. They haven't, they have not seen the feasibility. Not that I'm aware of, but this is, this was brought up before, I believe?
It was tabled before.
It was tabled before, okay. So at this point, town council hasn't seen it, hasn't seen anything.
So are we approving subject to council's review approval?
Yes, please. All right. Move that the select board vote to authorize the town administrator to enter into a contract for $54,200 with Weston and Sampson for a feasibility study for the Department of Public Works facility, subject to town council approval.
Second.
Move by Matthew, second by Gary. All those in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, we have a roadwork bid that was opened last week on Thursday. This is for resurfacing and associated work on Hartwell Ave, Lawrence Street, Gillian Way, and then the small portion of Foster Street that's kind of in between where I did some quick paving a few years ago and where the state project's going to stop. We opened bids again last Thursday. Pricing came in very good, well under what I had estimated at. Competitive market. We had five bidders ranging from a little over 500,000 to just under 600,000. Sunshine Paving was, out of North Chelmsford, was the low bidder on the project. Worked with them in the past. They've done work here in town in the past. Very good contractor. So we look for the board's approval for this contract.
So I, do you know when this work is going to start? Are we notifying people?
So in the, in the bid, I put tentative date of the week after Labor Day. So assuming you approve tonight, we will start getting notifications of upcoming roadwork starting within, you know, 30 days. The drop dead date was before, the week before Thanksgiving. So work should be completed by then. We'll tell people that if they want to do a new water service, gas service, all that type of thing, they should be doing it now.
Okay. And my, my other question's not specifically tied to this project, but is there an update to the paving plan? Or when do you expect an update to the general paving plan to come? So we know what road, people will know what roads are coming when?
So Ryan had asked me kind of late Thursday to put something together real quick. So I'd get you back on schedule and I'll slow you down real quick. But just, just a little bit of what we've done this year and just kind of a look ahead into next year. So the stuff that we've done this year, we did a lot of the pavement preservation work. Takes your work, crack ceiling. We did the entire Matta Wanaki neighborhood in a double micro surface. You see, if you go up the far end of Taylor Street, the sidewalk work that was mostly funded by Amazon is under construction soon-
All right. Move that the select board vote to authorize the town administrator to enter into a contract for $54,200 with Weston and Sampson for a feasibility study for the Department of Public Works facility, subject to town council approval.
Second.
Move by Matthew, second by Gary. All those in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, um, we have a roadwork bid, uh, that was opened last week on Thursday. Uh, this is for resurfacing and associated work on Hartwell Ave, Lawrence Street, Gillian Way, and then the small portion of Foster Street that's kind of in between, where I did some, uh, quick paving a few years ago and where the state project's gonna stop. Um, we opened bids again last Thursday. Uh, pricing came in, uh, very good, uh, well under what I had estimated at. Uh, competitive market, uh, we had five bidders ranging from a little over 500,000 to just under 600,000. Um, Sunshine Paving was, uh, the North Chelmsford was the low bidder on the project, worked with them in the past, they've done work here in town in the past, uh, very good contractor, uh, so we look for the board's approval for this contract.
So, um, I, do you know when this work is going to start? Are we notifying people?
So, in the, in the bid, I put, uh, tentative date of the week after Labor Day, so assuming you approve tonight, uh, we will start getting notifications of upcoming roadwork, starting within, you know, 30 days. Uh, the drop dead date was before, the week before Thanksgiving, so work should be completed by then. Uh, we'll tell people that if they want to do a new water service, gas service, all that type of thing, they should be doing it now.
Okay. Um, and my, my other question's not specifically tied to this project, but are, is there a, an update to the paving plan or when do you expect an update to the general paving plan to come? So we know what road, people will know what roads are coming when?
Yep. So, uh, Ryan had asked me kind of late Thursday to put something together real quick, so I'd get you back on schedule and I'll slow you down real quick. Um, but just, just a little bit of what we've done this year and just kind of a look ahead into next year. So, um, the stuff that we've done this year, we did a lot of the pavement preservation work, uh, takes your work, crack ceiling, we did the entire Matta-Wanaki neighborhood in the double micro surface. Uh, you see, if you go up the far end of Taylor Street, the sidewalk work that was mostly funded by Amazon is under construction, soon to be completed, probably next week. Um, and then obviously the bid we were just talking about with the, the resurfacing on those roads. Um, some of the larger projects, the Foster Street, uh, that we just did the grant of easement for, pre-construction meeting was at DOT last week. Uh, Onyx is the contractor with, uh, through Mass DOT. That work, you see survey baselines already laid out up the center of the road. They're gonna start utility coordination meetings soon, probably see some mobilization and possibly some tree work and starting to move utilities this fall. Um, the Great Road Beaver Brook Road intersection, one that's been kind of hanging on for a while, was tabled a little bit. Mass DOT changed their engineering directives. There were COVID traffic counts, formulas, now they want a new traffic council, kind of delayed a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
We just had a, a scheduling meeting on that last week. It's anticipated, seemed to be settled in on a, uh, design, two-lane roundabout with, uh, not sidewalk, shared use path as well, uh, that will eventually tie into the culvert replacement by the police station. That's a whole separate project, but that's a few years down the road. Uh, the anticipated schedule on this is 25% planned set early in the winter, set around the first of the year maybe. Uh, then there will be design public hearing on it and start, and then after that, we stop funding the project. DOT's taken that over for funding through the rest of the design and then they'll fund construction.
Through the chair, Steve, is that, are they still talking about a rotary-type system?
Yes, uh, two-lane, two-lane roundabout.
Roundabouts are rotary.
I was, I was signing my brain with him.
So, so that construction is well out? It's not in 25 then probably?
No, that'll be, that'll, once it hits 25%, it'll get programmed into the tip, the Transportation Improvement Program with, uh, the Boston NPO. So you're probably, once it gets programmed in, it's usually four to six years, depending on how the funding slots. Um, again, larger projects, the rest of the phases of Foster Street, which is continuing either a shared use path or sidewalks going the rest of the way, uh, all the way down to Tehadawon Road. And then, uh, Russell Street, uh, where the soil went through last year. My hope was honestly to do it this summer. Uh, ran into some right-of-way issues, property issues, some of the sidewalk is currently on private property, as it sits today. So, trying to figure out a good way to get that all cleaned up. Uh, and then the initial construction estimate, as you see on my slide, came in at well over $2.5 million. So once I get up off the floor and try to, yeah, because it just, it's not gonna happen at that amount of money, being locally funded anyway. So we've, we've turned it back a little bit, scaled it back, I gotta work through the right-of-way issues. Uh, probably have to be the town meeting for an easement or two, uh, maybe in the fall, if not last, you know, ditch in the spring. Um, and then for construction next year when school gets out. That's currently the plan on that. And then looking ahead again to next year, uh, we'll do a, a regular crack ceiling, tend to prepare that list, um, after the winter, see what the winter does to any of the roads. Obviously, the Russell Street project I just spoke of, the streets listed on here are ones, uh, currently looking at to pave next year. Some were waiting for like Adams, Conant, that stretch, and then Robinson Road, waiting for sore stubs to go up, uh, so then we can come in afterwards. Don't want to pave a road and then tear it up again. Um, see Warren Street Mill, a lot of this is tentative, we'll see how, again, what the winter does, um, and then how the funding shakes out, uh, based on, because I, I really want to plan a lot of my money for Russell Street, you know, uh, it's a good stretch for the community, gets your schools, you got your sports fields, it's a connection to the point, uh, town, community deserves, good stretch of road right there.
Cut in real quick, Steve. Um, is there anything that Raboli's gonna do to make it better than it is right now? Before, before you engage in full project?
Russell Street?
Yeah.
I'm getting beat up.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm sure. Uh, we're just kind of babysitting it for now. I mean, I can...
It's, it's a bigger question.
Yeah. I can put a number to, to making it a little better. Knowing that I'm just gonna tear it up.
I'm not saying that the town should be making it better, I'm saying that Raboli should be making it better.
Yeah, yeah.
As the contractor.
Sure, sure. Some of the agreement was to not have them, they pulled that out of the contract, so, because why have them come in?
If we're gonna be doing the full project.
And do it if I'm gonna come in and then tear it all up for new sidewalk and some drainage improvements, right?
Okay.
So it was working with, you know, Nick and Corey at LALWD to kind of coordinate some of that. They did a little extra in some other spots.
Okay.
You know what I mean? A little horse trading, I guess, if you will. Uh, and then just lastly, uh, some other larger projects to possibly start looking at. I know Shake Lane has been a topic, uh, off and on through the years, uh, for potential add sidewalk with, uh, being a truck cut through and the road is starting to fall into a little bit of disrepair. Um, and then ultimately, a, a bigger stretch is, uh, Harwood from the depot across the pond to Lake Warren. Remember, a couple of years ago, we had a sidewalk design, uh, funded through like a bond bill or something, that got a sidewalk from Foster Street, or at least the design anyway, from Foster Street down to Lake Warren, but now looking at it, and this will also be some coordination with water, because they want to replace the main through there. Um, but the big item there is crossing where the pond is, right? Not widening for sidewalks, so we're gonna widen all that out. So, a little bit of work, something to at least maybe get the ball rolling, because that'll be a, you know, a large, uh, costly project.
And you go along with fish.
More like a mud hole.
Maybe we can do what like Marlboro did at the reservoir, see that the, the aluminum sidewalk that they put in.
Yep.
And we can do that around the bridge.
We could, we could certainly do that.
A lot of washers on there.
And then, uh, just lastly, um, the last slide just shows, you know, a little bit of kind of where we're at for funding. As of this morning, my current Chapter 90 uncommitted balance was 731,000. Um, the bid that's in front of you, I was funding out of Chapter 90, kind of in stockpile that, because you can't stockpile that, so I've been kind of saving that for Russell Street until I saw the, like I said, the initial number. Um, annually, town gets right around 400,000, dips a little bit, up a little bit. Um, the end of June, we did get kind of the extra Chapter 90, they called it the fair share allotment this time, it's been the pothole, uh, money. Last time, it was the RAP funds, Winter Recovery Assistance Program, you know, they gave it a catchy name, but whatever, it's an extra $210,000. Um, locally, it's been right around that 900, 920, you know, fortunate enough, uh, that everybody continues to support that. Um, and then there's some grant opportunities we can look at for some of the sidewalk, construction work anyway, complete streets is the, uh, Shared Streets and Spaces program, that stuff we could kind of couple in for one project. Um, but other than that, that's kind of where we're at and what we're doing, roadwork-wise anyway.
I guess my only, uh, question or recommendation would be to, to update the website.
Yep.
Yeah, that's all, just still, with this information, really, even if that slides.
Sure.
That'd be great.
Sure. And, um, Mr. Chair, back to your point about the, uh, pavement management program, my hope is to, um, get some proposals in over the next couple of weeks and get that done this fall, so we can update it. 2021 was the last time it was done. Um, so I want to kind of freshen that up, so we can again do a little bit more prep over the winter.
Thank you.
Any more comments before I make the motion? Move that the select board vote to approve the awarding of a contract for resurfacing and related work for Hartwell Avenue in various locations in the amount of $506,346.75 to Sunshine Paving of North Chelmsford, Mass.
Second.
Move by Matthew, second by Chuck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Steve.
Hello. Uh, good evening. Thank you for letting me be here tonight to talk about, uh, this position that we're bringing before you. Um, I'm Alicia Day, Parks and Recreation. Um, so we have worked with the HR department and the Personnel Advisory Committee to develop a job description that we're calling the Recreation Supervisor. Um, so the memo, uh, was given to you as well as the job description, uh, with the memo. Um, and the, the need for this position is something that, um, actually Steve hit on a little bit, uh, ago of, you know, we're moving into a place where we're going to be having multiple locations. Um, so being able to have one individual that's gonna be able to supervise those recreation, uh, the program coordinators, uh, is definitely something that's needed. Uh, one of the things that the Park Commission has been, um, talking about and has tasked me as of last year was to look at the organizational chart and see where, um, we kind of need to amend that. So, uh, we're ahead of the growth rather than working behind. Um, so this is one of the positions that, um, we feel like we need to be able to bring in, uh, at this time. So, um, this position specifically, it, like I said, is going to be working with the program coordinators, will give them tasks that are more advanced, so for example, um, there's things that we need to do as far as procurement's concerned, we have bus contracts, um, trip contracts, uniform tracks, all of those things, so we would be looking for that person, uh, to take that on. Um, also doing all of the staff training and running that, making sure that everything is the same across the board, so to speak, um, and that everyone's getting that training all year round, um, that's specifically for our seasonal staff. Um, so to kind of keep it a little bit short, because I know you have a very long evening, uh, like I said, it's, uh, this job, job description was written with Michelle Viver, um, Human Resources Director, uh, was reviewed, graded, and approved by the Personnel Advisory Committee, uh, on July 31st. And, uh, the Park Commission, uh, is in support of this, they know about this job description, but their, um, next meeting isn't until August 21st, where we'll get that, uh, go ahead from them. So, um, this was an opportunity to bring it before, because it has to be approved by the select board. Um, so that's kind of the, the short of it, uh, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
What's the program coordinator grade, do you know? It's an 11?
Yeah, it's an 11. Yep.
And this is, this is basically pulling from within, it's, this, we're not adding, did you mention that?
Correct. So currently, we have three program coordinators. Uh, what we would be doing is, um, we would be creating this role, uh, and not adding in an additional program coordinator, so there would be...
Do you'd be adding, promoting one of those three?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, good. Okay. Any other questions? All right, good. Move that the select board vote per the recommendation of the Personnel Advisory Committee to approve a job description for a Recreation Supervisor and establish the Recreation Supervisor position on grade 12 of Compensation Plan Schedule A, permanent full and part-time employees.
Second.
Move by Matthew, second by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thanks.
Mr. McCurdy?
Okay. Yes, sir. Thank you.
I brought the muscle with me, too. All right, so tonight I'm here to just give you a brief update on the Neshova closure. As everybody's aware, Neshova Hospital and Air will be closing, um, at the end of this month. Anytime a medical facility closes, they are supposed to give a 120-day notification of said closure. However, the money that is available to keep the hospital running is not going to get to that 120-day mark. So as of right now, Neshova will be closing as of August 31st, and there does not appear to be any avenue, um, that exists within the state government to keep the hospital opening, operating pass there. Some of the things that we are looking at is, Neshova has about 16,000 patient contacts per year. This is not just the emergency department, this is, uh, system-wide for them, um, that are going to have to disperse to other hospitals. So this is going to cause a cascading effect of other hospitals having to absorb these 16,000 patients. And even now, uh, before the hospital is closed, there's already a marked increase in the number of patients that are coming into Emerson Hospital, LeMister Hospital, Clinton Hospital, and Lowell General. And this is only expected to rise as time goes on. So how does that affect us locally? Uh, locally, we're going to see increased periods of time to drop off patients from medical halls. So currently, we can get turned around, meaning to a hospital, patient dropped off and leave the hospital in 10 to 15 minutes, maybe, uh, 20 on a longer day. We're already seeing these wait times go up to 40 and 45 minutes, and it's not going to be an uncommon circumstance that we're waiting an hour to an hour and a half to drop patients off. Now, this doesn't mean that patients will not be treated, they will still be treated by our paramedics, um, in the hall or in the ambulance, waiting to get their spot. Um, and there will be the additional resources if it's something extremely severe, um, but everybody should expect that, um, ambulances are going to be tied up at a much more, uh, a much higher rate than what we currently see. Um, fortunately, in Massachusetts, we have a very robust mutual aid system. Um, this is going to, however, tax that mutual aid system significantly. You're going to have ambulances moving all over this region answering calls, um, in order to, uh, combat what we're likely to run into. We can look to the Norwood Hospital floods of 2020 as kind of the example, where wall times, and the wall times again are that time you're standing in the hospital waiting for a bed, went from 15 minutes to an hour and a half, and some ambulances were coming from as far away as three or four communities in order to pick up a patient and bring them to other parts of the state, uh, for treatment. So, some other key things that we're having to worry about here locally, our medical control, our doctor that oversees our treatment protocols was out of Neshova. Um, just today, we signed, uh, a new affiliation with Emerson Hospital, which will allow us to continue operating past August 31st. Had we not done this, our operation would have ceased with Neshova. So clearly, that was priority one for us, um, and that was taken care of today. Emerson Hospital has been a great partner. Um, typically, these, um, affiliation agreements can take 30, 16, 90s to execute, we've been able to do it in the last two weeks. Um, and they have been great partners in, in making sure that we have what we need to continue operating at the paramedic level. Um, there will also be a cascading impact that we have to be cognizant of, is it's not just the immediate hospitals around Neshova that are going to get impacted, this can be two or three hospitals away. So there may actually be an influx as far away as Lawrence, Worcester, out towards, uh, Gardner and Athol, all created, um, by this kind of snowballing effect at each of the other hospitals. Um, so to say this is a step back in EMS in our area is an absolute understatement, I think it's a, a monumental step back in all of healthcare for this area. One thing that Neshova, um, has been doing very well is dealing with the mental hea-, mental health aspect. There's already a great need for mental health services in this area, and DPH, the Department of Mental Health, are working, uh, who was the word they used today, Jim? Uh, vigorously, I believe, in order to increase capacities in this area, which is certainly going to be helpful, but it's going to take time for this to all, uh, come about. Chief Pennard and I have been working on that aspect of it as well, trying to get more, uh, mental health services in town. Um, one concern that we certainly do have is that coming into the flu season, that is going to be the true test of how much of a disaster this is. Every year, January, February timeframe, you get a massive influx of patients that, on a good year, um, overwhelms the hospital system. This year, it's actually gonna be far worse. Uh, or, I guess technically that's next year, but the next flu season, uh, will be far worse. So I know I've thrown a lot of bad news at you. Um, the good news, if there is any good news, um, is that the fire chiefs are planning aggressively in order to figure out the best ways to provide service and continue to provide service to the various entities within their communities and communities as a whole. Um, that said, it's going to create significant changes, there is no doubt about that. There are gonna be times where, uh, certainly, calls are going to be waiting a little bit longer for, um, an ambulance to arrive, so it may be, um, myself, the deputy, other firefighters, or paramedics, or the police, um, that are having extended on-scene times with folks in town. Into the state, the state, I think, I'll come out and say it, I think, drop the ball on this entire thing. One of the things that I have been asking for is that the state have a supplemental appropriation to help all the communities. This is a region-wide issue that has now been pushed very quickly to the local level. And once it gets to the local level, there's no next step down except for just throwing our hands up and saying, we can't do it. And that's not in my DNA, and I don't think anybody on the board or in the community, I don't think it's in their DNA. So I'll take questions, I guess, or Jim, is there anything you want to add?
No, no, you did well, chief. You've been working, staying on top of this. Thank you very much for, thanks for everything and reporting back very well. Thanks.
Is there, I mean, I know that the, I know that the AR Select Board presented something. Is there?
Resolution.
Yeah, resolution. Do you think there's, you kind of said there's nothing that anybody can do at this point. Is there anything you would recommend that we could potentially do to try to pull the needle in anyway?
So I think the biggest thing that we can do is talk to the elected officials at the state level and really make sure that they understand that this local impact is significant, that it is going to impact this entire area. In terms of the resolution, I'll defer that to your judgment there. I know other communities are considering doing the same thing, so it may be worthwhile just to have a unified front in that respect. But again, I will defer that completely to you.
I remember at some point, Emerson was working on alleviating the impact that the urgent care here in Littleton is going to feel. Can you tell us a little bit more about that?
So we expect that urgent care is actually going to get busier here in Littleton. Certainly, people that say, you know, hey, I can make it to Emerson, I'll be fine, stop into urgent care with truly dire medical conditions. So I think that that's another impact that we potentially could see here, is urgent care getting people who are sicker and more often. And lots of times when they have those truly critically ill patients, they can only deal with certain issues there. It's going to fall on EMS in order to get them transferred out to definitive care, whether it's Lowell General for a heart attack or someplace like Leahy for trauma.
So how does the board feel about writing a resolution like AR did?
Yeah, I mean, they're the hosting community, if you will, but this is really a regional thing. So I mean, I almost, I read over their resolution, and it's everything that we would say, you know, so I almost, you know, wish we had all gotten together and kind of signed the same resolution, but multiple ones is fine, too. We can almost verbatim, our concerns are the same concerns that they put in their resolutions, so.
Concur.
It's really all we can do besides speaking to representatives, which I know we're all doing, and we're, it just becomes a waiting game. We're in a 120-day window of, all you can do is, you know, I've seen the signs starting to pop throughout town.
It's not a 120 days, though. We wish it was 120 days.
Right. Yeah, I know. But, you know, that's all I think our board do is, a resolution at very least, and then continue speaking with our, you know, our state representation.
There's hearings on Wednesday, right?
Yeah.
Thursday, 6:00 p.m.
At Devon's, correct? Yeah. So just continue to make, be present, you know, have representation at those, make sure we coordinate, so we have someone always at those events.
Yeah, at the, the hearing on Thursday night, there will be an order in how people speak, speak apparently, so state officials will speak, and then it'll go to the local government, and then I think it goes to the public, so if anybody wants to speak at that.
That's a lot.
Yeah, I wish I had great news to tell you.
And we're about to see a growth spurt here in housing in our community, so it's.
Yep, for sure. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Three weeks ago, the Emerson, to Emerson, a point down to the thing, and they were awesome. Thank you.
I think that's one thing we should mention, is that, you know, if the governor is going to push MBTA communities and push growth.
Unbelievable.
You know, she has to support.
Taking away, that's something we could add.
That's a valid, that's a really valid point.
You know, where we are in MBTA.
Yeah, we're adding 750 units for you, and you're taking away medical care for them.
Right, you're taking away so many hospital beds.
We could probably leave that in here somewhere.
Good call. Good call.
I think, to answer your question, Mark, I'm in favor of us putting forth something, because we're good. Not only is it thing, patient care, certainly, but we've got a number of employees of the hospital system that are residents of Littleton as well. So does anyone want to take the lead on writing one? Or who wants to take the lead on writing or crafting something?
I think we have it written.
I mean, I think we just build on AR's, right?
Okay.
I can do that.
Okay.
You okay doing that kind of, just trying to add in that?
Yep.
Okay.
A little bucket gun just added?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you. Public input. You want to start, Gary?
Excuse me?
You have members update?
Oh, I don't, I don't want to say, you know, we haven't been, we haven't met in a while, but I'm enjoying the summer. And this, you know, and then obviously, Neshova closing came up, so you're dealing with a lot of that, and a lot of, Littleton's under construction. The roads are under construction, so we're getting a lot of, a lot of that, and it's tough if I know the roads right now, and I fear for February, when the fowls start popping up, but I really don't have anything.
I'm kind of in the same boat. The only thing I'd say is, third Thursday.
All right.
Is, it's Thursday, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So just as a reminder to folks, it's at Park on Thursday evening, so come out, see your neighbors and support the town and businesses that has won.
Are we allowed to talk carnival? Is it, is it an absolute?
I don't, there, I don't know if it's an absolute or not.
Oh, okay.
I think it's happening, so they had asked for, come by the office today asking for that, so the thought would be that at least the licenses would be required, meeting again next week on the 21st, so we may try to squeeze that in.
Just like State September, mid-September, I think, like the third week of September, is that?
September 5th.
5th, yeah.
Oh, goodness.
Yeah, that's why we have to.
Next meeting.
Yeah.
We're going to talk about the orchard later. The only other thing, I guess, would be the Habitat House, which is just slowly moving forward. No significant news on that, except that we have voted to support it from the Affordable Housing Trust, and, yeah.
Very little. Am I going to steal your thunder if I talk about the road race? So some road races coming up and registration is open. It'll be on September 14th, 2024, and it'll support track and field, so with Littleton and the facilities. So folks will register and come on out, and if you can't run or walk, come out and cheer.
I attended one of the MMA talks on, the climate action talks last week, where they talked about EVs and all the incentives available. There's huge incentives for charging stations around, like, I think it's $100,000 per site that the state will give you for charging stations of Level 2 or Level 3. And there's a lot of incentives, you can participate in the more EV for all of the municipal vehicle fleets, with the rebate starting at $7,500 for full electric and going up to, well, school buses are like $40,000 or $60,000 rebate you can get. Trash trucks are really high, too, so there's a lot of things going on there, so that's all I have. Any updates on the projects, Brian or Jim?
So I can give a quick update on Shagert Lane. We are scheduling a meeting for next Wednesday. It'll be a joint meeting with the school, the school committee, select board, finance committee in Shagert Lane, building committee at time. Our OPM and our architect will be coming forward, giving a presentation on the different options that we look, submit to, to the MSBA, as well as some preliminary cost estimates of what that, what that will look like. So that's sort of our next big thing that's happening in terms of MSBA. 36 King Street's coming along well, meaning weekly on that project, so, you know, continuing to make adjustments and, you know, as you open things up, things will look a little different than, or what maybe you hoped for, but, but that's coming along as well.
Shattuck Center is now green.
Shattuck Center is now green, that's right.
Okay. Public input?
Good evening. Hospital news is a tough act to follow. How about something positive?
For you, sir?
Yeah, that's right. Ivan Pogosik, WICMA. Here to just announce, my wife's scholarship fundraiser is happening September 7th. It's a cornhole tournament at the Tiki during the day, Saturday, September 7th, starting registration at 10:30. It's to benefit Littleton Park and Rec and education scholarships. My wife worked at Littleton Park, and for those of you who don't know that, and she thoroughly enjoyed making sure kids participated in activities. So we did this a couple of years ago, and proceed, benefit the scholarship, make sure that families struggling in town have an avenue for their kids to participate in activities. So it is, it's on the Littleton Park and Rec website. CAS is helping out. You can talk to him, go on the website, register. Again, September, live music, cash bar, all in all, great day.
That it is. A lot of people will benefit from it. Thank you for doing it again.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name's Leonard Leo. I live at 3 Maplehurst Road, Littleton. We had a dog incident, and they requested that we come to this meeting tonight.
You're for the public hearing coming up?
Yes.
We'll get to that in a couple.
Is that, okay, is that later? Okay, I wasn't sure when that was.
Rob Rounds, 25, Jennifer Road. I'm grateful that the 55K was approved. I think some of the Q and A just presented to me another perspective of how this very, very critical issue isn't getting enough open conversation. I know many of you are working diligently. I appreciate all the stuff, all the work that you're doing. I feel badly that since the last meeting you attended, or convened, that Amy Tarlo Lewis and Jen Clancy have resigned, joining Brad Mitchell. Grateful that Sarah C. were still on and will be still on, but the loss of the folks that gave three years of their lives and so much effort is really a blow. I just want to throw out, in fact, it seemed to me like some of the people, and I thought the questions were very good and very appropriate, but I just don't think the community is prepared. I even question now whether with the M E D and anywhere, you know, are you going to get enough seed material? I've spoken. I believe that a public hearing, you know, whether you convene a public hearing, whether from a open meeting, you know, laws, et cetera, that I'm not knowledgeable of, even if there was like two of you, I know many of you, you see me on Fridays during your office hours, I need to stop taking up your time. But I think the urgency is what brings me there, to just kind of push forward different aspects of what I'm hearing from other people. I think if two of you were to hold a public hearing, more, almost on, instead, maybe in addition to, you guys have no time, but, I don't know, paying 55 grand, and I know there's many other things, not just the MAPC meetings that are scheduled, but it seems like there's an ongoing thing here about socializing and getting input. And I throw out, you know, if you guys were to hold a public hearing, maybe you would better prepare the community, so thanks, thanks for your time.
Okay. There's no one else, we'll move on to appointments. Appointing Henry Harvey to the Permanent Municipal Building Committee.
Yep, that's, yeah, fairly straightforward. Is Mr. Harvey here?
Doesn't appear to be.
All right.
I saw, I mean, it's like he's qualified, so.
Move that the Select Board vote to appoint Henry Harvey as a member of the Permanent Municipal Building Committee for a term expiring June 30th, 2027.
Second.
By Matthew, seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And appointing Adam Decost to the LCTV Advisory Committee.
Forget about it. This is a real.
Do we support this one?
He's currently on the committee. He's the chair right now, so.
Move that the Select Board vote to appoint Adam Decost, no relation, as a member of the Littleton Community Television Advisory Committee for a term expiring June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Go get sworn in. One-day liquor licenses for dirigible. There's five of them.
Looks like they smartened up and put them all together.
They are not here this evening, but.
They're really smart.
But this has been reviewed by both police and fire, and they approve, recommend.
Probably ready to dive into this. Move that the Select Board vote pursuant to Mass. General Lodge, Chapter 138, Section 14, to issue a special license, also known as a one-day liquor license, to Colin Knurk of Dirigible Brewing Company, LLC, for wine and malt beverages for the Littleton Road Race located at Fay Park, 19 Foster Street, Littleton, Mass. on Saturday, September 15th, 2024, between the hours of 12:00 p.m. and 4:00 p.m. And move that the Select Board vote pursuant to Mass. General Lodge, Chapter 138, Section 14, to issue a special license, also known as a one-day liquor license, to Colin Knurk of Dirigible Brewing Company, LLC, for wine and malt beverages for the Littleton Oktoberfest located at Fay Park, 19 Foster Street, Littleton, Mass. on Sunday, September 28th, 2024, between the hours of 12:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m. And move that the Select Board vote pursuant to Mass. General Lodge, Chapter 138, Section 14, to issue a special license, also known as a one-day liquor license, to Colin Knurk of Dirigible Brewing Company, LLC, for wine and malt beverages for three separate community events at Theo's Market Garden located at 571 Great Road, Littleton, Mass. for the followings in time, September 20, September 14th, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. October 19th, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. December 14th, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
I missed the last one.
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Chuck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing on.
Can we just take, just take a brief recess, just for me to give you a few documents and let everyone sign?
Sure.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
I was in the third line, third line, fourth line, it's really good.
Find more there? Okay. Okay. Okay, so this is going to be the dangerous dog hearing. So this is a hearing of the select board called pursuant to general law, chapter 140, section 157, and chapter 84, the town's general bylaws for the purposes of determining whether the dog named Missy of Three Maplehurst Road is a nuisance or dangerous dog, and to determine the appropriate remedial action to be taking. So it's Tricia Sinessi. So. So Mass. General law, chapter 140, section 157 states that the hearing authority shall investigate or cause the investigation of the complaint, including an examination under the oath of the complainant. So accordingly, the chair shall, I need to swear in Tricia Sinessi as follows. In accordance with chapter 140, section 157, the complainant, Tricia Sinessi, must be examined under oath as part of the hearing. Therefore, please stand, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Tricia Sinessi.
I, Tricia Sinessi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That the testimony I am about to give.
That the testimony I am about to give.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. So, so we're going to begin the hearing with the testimony of the complainant, to be followed by the testimony of any other witnesses that wish to testify, and the dog's owner, and other members of the public who speak. So. And, yeah, okay.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Cohen, and I'm an attorney from Boston Dog Lawyers for Trish Sessi. So if I can just give a few brief opening remarks, and then we can turn it over to her. We're here because Trish's dog Peach was injured on July 3rd of this year when Trish was walking her dog on her side, on her street, and Long Leo was being walked on the opposite side of the street. Trish's dog is about 35 pounds, and Mary Leo's dog, Missy, is 50, 55-pound boxer dog. And the Missy got loose from Ms. Leo and ran over to our side of the street and attacked Peach. The attack was multiple bites. First bite was to her right side, which created a skin flap of sizable proportion. Then the dog retreated, was brought back, and then got loose again and attacked Peach on her left leg. And she's still recovering, we're only a month or five weeks post. And we're here because, and it's about a $4,400 bill. So this, this certainly ruined the summer for Peach and for her owner, but we're not here for punishment, but we're here because it's an obligation of a pet owner, I believe, that when an attack like this happens, which is significant, they have to come forward and have to seek, seek out the town to do something about it, to prevent it from the next time happening. So the people we're here to protect right now don't even know that they're being protected. And maybe nothing else will ever happen, but I think at this point, given the nature of that particular incident on July 3rd, we're asking the board to take some basic remedial measures. Again, this is, we're not here to punish the dog, we're not here to euthanize the dog, we're here for some basic measures, but ordinarily, I don't even think we'd have to come here, but of concern to me, in the business that I'm in, is that this person knew the dog attacked another dog where there was fur everywhere, had to be carried home, she did nothing about it for seven days. Mary Leo, not contact animal control office. The police had to do a stakeout, trying to figure out from other neighbors' ring cameras each day, when does this person walk this dog in this area? And it was only then, after a few days of tracking this, that they finally were able to approach Ms. Leo and get her to understand and admit to the attack. Then, as they're talking to her, the police are talking to her with her dog, Missy, there, Missy starts lunging and trying to attack another dog. So I've read a statement from Ms. Leo where I am not convinced that this woman understands the scope of this bite. She's here for 20 years. Perhaps Missy has had no priors, but on this day, on July 3rd, at this time in the morning, this was a dangerous dog, and we're asking you to do something about it. The definition under 140, 157, that we're operating under, is a dangerous dog without justification attacks a person, a domestic animal, causing physical injury, or behaves in a, in a manner a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury, death, or harm to a domestic or owned animal. That is what occurred that day. I've read a statement from Ms. Leo that she said our dog got loose and ran to the other side of the street, or perhaps her theory that these dogs were protecting their owners. No, there shouldn't have been any protection having to have that day. We were on our side of the street, she was on hers, and her dog got loose. And because of her failure to understand and explain the story truthfully like that, including a very vague explanation of what happened to the leash and collar that we don't need to get into, but we're here tonight to say, the neighborhood has to be safer. My client didn't, isn't, didn't bring out all of her neighbors and the pitchfork crowd that we see at these hearings. She's just here to say, look, this is what happened, and Missy, while she was quarantined with a muzzle, that order, it wasn't an order, it was under the quarantine by CO Tower. So what we're asking here is that Missy be deemed dangerous dog, that she be ordered to be muzzled when off the property, and that a harness, especially fitted harness, be used in terms of the restraint being used, because Missy is just not controllable by whatever leash that the owner is using. So we're just suggesting proper restraint with a harness and a muzzle when off the property. And this most likely will never happen again. I understand she's had a good history as a dog, Missy, but on this day, she didn't. So we're asking to take some, some safety measures. And to the extent what I've had to say isn't testimony, certainly Trish will come up and speak to the board. Thank you.
Hi, sorry, nervous. Just a difficult thing to, um, to talk about. If I don't look you in the eye, it's just to keep it moving.
No worries.
On Wednesday, July 2nd, excuse me, Wednesday, July 3rd, I was walking Peach, she's a 35-pound cattle dog, Chihuahua mix, on Lincoln Drive towards Grove on the, the number side of the street. I see another dog and owner turn from Grove on Lincoln, heading towards Goldsmith. So we're kind of like, about ships passing in the, in the night. The dog pulls and begins to bark at Peach, so I step further left, essentially into someone else's driveway, to give as much distance as possible. And my dog barks back, so I'm like, all right, let's keep it going. And all of a sudden, the other dog crosses the street and begins to maul my dog. Later, the owner comes over and tries to get control of her dog, which she does, and I think it's over, but she loses control a second time, and for a second time, the dog proceeds to maul my dog. Finally, she gets full control, and I looked down, and my dog's side is hanging off of her. So I scream and I look to the person and I said, do you have a phone? Because that moment, I was going to call 911, which I now realize you don't do for a dog, but I'm like, I gotta get to the hospital. The owner does not answer me. Neighbor who, at that point, must have stepped out, said, do you need me to call someone? And I shouted, I don't know who to call, I have to get my dog to the hospital. At that point, I, and thankfully, I live up the street, I get my dog in a car, and I take off to the emergency vet on 495 in the breakdown lane, like a bat out of hell. I've got one hand on the steering wheel, the other hand is holding my dog together. They take Corinne for, for surgery and send me home. Around noon, while Peach is still in surgery, I call Littleton Police Department, and I say, I need to report a dog attack. They put me in contact with animal control. Sir Tower contacts me, and I was very blunt. I said, I don't know if my dog will live, she was attacked, and I need to report this. And that's where she kind of took things from there. That was on Wednesday. On Friday, at the urging of a neighbor, I went to Littleton Police Department to file a police report with Officer Jones. And for the seven days between the incident and when the dog and owner were identified, my neighbors were vigilant, looking at their ring cameras, and they started to learn that the individual and her dog continued to hold the same routine and pass that information to myself and to animal control. So they were able to interest her now that they've known her. At that point, it's my understanding, per the police report, I wasn't involved in, in that conversation, that the individual acknowledged it was her involved. And during that conversation, Officer Jones, in his narrative, noted that the owner had difficulty controlling the dog as another dog passed by. So that's kind of where we, we left things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if the board, if there was a packet of the board, from animal control, that included the vet bills?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other witnesses that wish to speak? Then we just, neighbors, Ryan, neighbors, sir?
Yeah, so, yeah, there are no other witnesses. So I think basically now we would move on to, not our missing.
We got them in the email, but they're not in the packet. Can I ask you a couple of questions? Have you spoken to Ms. Leo at all?
I have not. I wasn't aware of her identity until she was identified, and I did not choose to reach out to her at that point.
Okay. There hasn't been any offer of financial payment for the, for the bills or anything like that?
No, she and I have been in no contact.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Leo, would you like to?
Hi, my name's Leonard Leo.
It's like just you want to swear.
So I have to, I'm sorry. I have to swear you both in, and your first name? Leo? So I'll swear you, one, I, repeat after me, please. I, Leonard Leo.
I, Leonard Leo.
Do solemn swear that the testimony I'm about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
That the testimony I'm about to give is the truth, nothing but the truth.
I, Mary Leo.
I, Mary Leo.
Do solemnly swear. That the testimony I'm about to give. Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
Okay, my name's Leonard Leo. My wife has some cognitive problems. She took a fall a year ago. She's disabled from work, so I'd like to speak. I didn't, we were bringing lawyers into this. I've lived in Littleton for 39 years. I've had dogs for all 39 years of that. We've not had any kind of a problem at all. This dog is a rescue, all dogs have been rescue dogs, but this dog's a rescue dog. It hasn't been difficult, but about two years ago, it was attacked by two smaller dogs. And since that time, there's a certain sized dog that just sets her off, and we try to correct it. But that's the way it is, and all, I'm very sorry about your dog, I really, really am. We've never had any kind of an issue. But this collar she was wearing that day, it was from Petco, it was for the right-sized dog, but it's got one of those plastic snap things on it, and that's what broke when this all happened. The day after that happened, we went down, we bought her a big leash that's buckled, so this cannot happen again, and a muzzle that she's been on every single day since the quarantine period. Mariana walks the dog every single day, it's a comfort dog for her. We've never, ever had a problem, any of our neighbors, I mean, nobody has ever had a problem with this dog. Like I said, it did get attacked a while ago, and it's had a problem. But as far as the dog itself, when the officer was, you guys have this packet? When the officer was interviewing Mariana, it wasn't what we had just heard. The officer actually stated. Another dog was being walked as well. Mary Leo's appeared to be wanting playful and pulled towards the other dog. I mean, it was playful, this is what the officer's saying, it's not like it was bad. This, this dog really isn't a vicious dog in any way. Like I said, there's a certain sized dog that kind of gets to work because she was attacked by two smaller dogs at one point down by the lake. I don't know what else to say. You know, we didn't know lawyers were coming down and everything else. We just got this notice last Friday from the police. I went to the police department today to find out what time the meeting was tonight, and we're just here, and like I said, I'm very sorry about your dog. Since that time, she's been walked with a muzzle and a different collar. And that's all I say, I mean, that collar, we didn't know, we bought it from Petco, and I thought it would hold the dog back, but it broke right through that plastic thing. That's all I can really say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess some questions?
Oh, yeah, if there's any question, definitely.
So with the dog being carried or walked, I'm a little confused.
Car dog?
Yes.
Okay, walking, it's a, it's a 55, 55 to 60-pound dog. But once it broke loose, she didn't know how to, you know, put the collar back on and restrain properly.
Just like, just some of the questions I had. So you, you mentioned that you, you acknowledge that the dog has had a problem with smaller dogs, had a fight in the past.
Right. Right.
You said you've been trying to work on it. What if, if anything, have you tried, or what hasn't?
Well, actually, two of my kids have smaller dogs, and she finds them with them. It's just, she'll walk by most dogs and want to play, and wag her tail and everything else. But like I said, there's a certain sized dog that just, kind of just snaps her, I guess. But like I said, we've never had a problem, and usually you can just hold the dog, but this collar broke loose, and that's what hap-. And even the collar that we had, it's kind of like a light choke collar. Like, it doesn't have spikes in it, but it's got these like beads on it that are supposed to go into the dog. I mean, we try to do whatever we can for her, she's a sweetheart, really, but that was a bad circumstance.
Any other questions?
I might have, but you go ahead.
No, go ahead.
But I'm still writing something.
Think you'd ask if there's anyone else that'd like to speak?
Anyone in the audience wish to say anything? Please. Name and address, please.
Erin Healy, 12 Lincoln Drive. I just want to make sure you all have the picture.
Yes.
So if you look at the picture, you can see what the attack looked like. I have a puppy. If you go around Long Lake any time of day, there's lots of people walking their dogs there. We should be able to walk down the street without fearing that that's going to happen, and that's the case right now. And I think it's, it's obvious that there's a big problem here. So I'm hoping that you'll be able to make a decision to make some requirements for the dog.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
I have a question, sorry. You mentioned that there's a certain type of dog that makes your dog snap. What did that look like?
It's just-
What did that snapping look like?
Oh, no, she just pulled, like, she just pulls, you know what I mean? Like, she just pulls. But that collar that was on her broke, and she just pulls when it's a certain little dog, because two small dogs attacked her last year down by Lake, and that was the thing. And like I said, as soon as this happened, I went out, I got a different type of collar that could pull a Mack truck with. And we put a muzzle on her, I mean, right away. And also, just, you know, they were saying they couldn't find us for a while. The day after that happened, we went to Pennsylvania for a family reunion for five days. And that's why, because she walks the dog every single day. And if we were home, they would have got ahold of her the very next day. But we went to Pennsylvania for a family reunion, and we were gone for five days. The day we got back, she took them for a walk, and that's when the police came up and asked her what was going on. It's not like there was any kind of avoidance, or we were trying to avoid something. Like I said, I've lived there for 39 years, and we've been walking dogs there for 39 years, and we've never had a problem before this. And like I said, I am sorry for what happened to your dog. And without any direction, we went to a much larger collar, and we muzzle her every time that she's on a walk now. So that's, that's all I can say.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've read over all the, like everybody here, over the last week or so, looking at all the information, and I-
We only got this last Friday, just so you know. You guys have been seeing it for a week, we saw it-
Sure, no, it was more, we needed it, because we needed to see, get a picture.
I'm just saying, we just got it on Friday afternoon.
You know, dog lover myself, you know, I've had dogs my whole life, and all different breeds. And one thing that I know is, I would say, out of all of the breeds, 90% of dogs have the capacity to do what your dog did. But knowing that as the owner, I would, I would expect that the owner would make sure that every possible, everything in place with the dog could not do this. Knowing if that dog, you acknowledged that the dog had the capacity. You mentioned that straight up. Knowing that, some of the things that you're doing, you did afterwards, and I'm glad you did. I'm glad the dog has been put on a muzzle, knowing that the dog has this capacity to do this to smaller dogs especially. But even any dog walking, I mean, I would feel comfortable walking by a Great Dane that's on a leash, and the owner's got it, and you want to feel comfortable. So I think any dog, and people need to feel comfortable walking, whether it's walking a dog by themselves around other dogs. I know if we grew up, anyone that grew up in the 60s and 80s, it was like the Wild West, chasing bicycles and everything else. But this, the fact that the dog had the aggression within it to go after this smaller dog, it could have been a larger dog, it really doesn't matter, and inflict the injury that it did, I think tells me that, A, that breed, like, most breeds do have the capacity, as playful as they can be, and the dog usually, in my opinion, it's, I would say it's, I almost want to say 99% of the time, it's not particularly the dog's fault, it's the owner not knowing that the dog, what the dog's capable of, or the owner not properly restraining the dog.
For the leash, I mean, the collar broke, you know what I mean? I don't know what to say. It's those plastic locks, like I said, we got it, it was right size for the dog's neck. I don't know how to, I don't know. I mean, definitely was nothing on purpose, and I tried to correct the situation as soon as I could.
No, and it sounds like, to me, some of the things that you've done seem sufficient to what we would expect. You know, I personally, in vote on this, I wouldn't, I don't believe the dog to be a dangerous dog. I believe the dog, you know, I would be more in the nuisance category, where I'd be worried. But I'm more concerned with the making that the owner, the two of you, have, understand this is something that happened, and takes, you know, the proper precautions. And it sounds like you've done that, at least with the collar. Looks like-
A muzzle.
Non-destructible collar, and a muzzle. I mean, I'm comfortable with that. Those precautions that have been taken place, I believe, would prevent this from happening again if the exact, exact same scenario were to happen.
We'll get there.
Yeah, but I don't know what else needs to be said.
So, so just before, we have to go through the air. Anyone else wish to speak before we close? Go ahead.
Just to sum up, I haven't taken the proper precautions, because that is not the right muzzle to use. In fact, Phyllis Tower reported that, she said, "What are you going to do?" She said, "I'm going to purchase a basket muzzle." That is not a basket, that's a nylon, that is not fit for this purpose. That collar, as big as it is, it should be a harness. And the reason, whether it's nuisance or dangerous, to get, the key is to get an order in place. The consequences of violating an order are the same. But to get order in place, because again, I heard two "I'm sorrys" and eight excuses. It rolls up to the owner, as I think you're getting. So he cannot say anymore that this has never happened. It's happened. So I think the board understands that, and it's just time to, for the Leo to enter life, knowing that they have a dog, or recalling that they have a dog that has triggers. And to just try to avoid that as much as possible, or use the right, the right tools. They could engage in training, too, to try to desensitize the dog, but, I mean, that's, that can be expensive. They're, they're good people, we just, they have to recognize what they have for a dog.
Does anyone else wish to speak before we close the hearing?
My only hope in doing this was to ensure that we have a mutually agreeable, sane solution. I don't want any harm to come to Missy. I want Mr. and Mrs. Leo to continue their routine. My concern is that the modifications that they are volunteering to do, for which I'm grateful, may not be appropriate for Missy's strength, or comfort, or her own enjoyment. I think an order will be prescriptive around how to ensure that everybody continues to enjoy their area with the dog okay. And I sincerely appreciate the steps that Mr. and Mrs. Leo are taking. I guess that's all I wanted, thank you.
Could I ask you a question?
Please.
So if, what, 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 what would the, what categories, what items would you prefer? What would be satisfactory to you? What order would be satisfactory to you?
I think both, a basket muzzle. I'm not a dog, I don't understand the detail, but whatever's most appropriate for Missy's breed, and her comfort, and ability to pant, I think it gets specific by a veterinarian is step one. But also, the harness, because of her strength and size, I don't know, I can't make the determination if it's appropriate. I'm hearing that it may not be, and that a harness will be more appropriate so that everyone can continue their routine, with the knowledge that everybody is also safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something. We did try the basket-
Would you, would you stand up?
Thank you.
Sorry. I, we did try the basket muzzle, and because of the shape of her head, it just lights right off. So we couldn't do that, that's why we got the other muzzle, which actually covers her chin and her throat, and goes around the back, and it works great on her.
Where did you get that muzzle? Have you seen a veterinarian basket muzzle? Regarding, regarding the fit?
We just took it from Petco.
Okay.
And they tried it, and they just said, "She's got her head." But we don't mind putting a harness, and if you want a harness on it, we'll do one. I just got the collar, because that's what I thought was good. We don't mind putting a harness. Bought a basket muzzle, it didn't work, another one it did work. We took the dog from Petco, and they just said, "With the shape of the dog," and they didn't think that we could fill one door.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak before we close the hearing? Okay, so now, we, everyone's talked, everyone's spoken, there was two, so we can decide whether we're ready to close the hearing and render a decision, or whether we should continue it.
Well, we're gonna, are we gonna have, we're gonna debate about it before we make regular decision?
Yes, but we have, we can close the hearing, and then it's just us.
I'm ready to close the hearing in that sense. So I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Is that going to be a roll call, Ryan? Chuck?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Karen?
Yep.
And I'm a guess. Okay. So now we have to determine whether to find the dog as a nuisance, or dangerous dog, or discomplained. And I'll read the standards for nuisance and dangerous dog. So a dangerous dog is a dog that either, without justification, attacks a person or domestic animal, causing physical injury or death, or is an animal a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat or physical injury or death to a person or, to domestic or owned animal. A dog cannot be dangerous solely based on growling or barking, based on the breed of the dog, if the dog is reacting to another animal or to a person, and the dog reaction was not grossly disproportionate to any following circumstances. The dog was protecting or defending itself, its offspring, another domestic animal or person from attack. The person who was attacked or threatened by the dog was committing crime upon the person or property. The person attacked or threatened by the dog was engaged in teasing, tormenting, battering, assault, injury or otherwise provoking the dog. Or time that attacked the person or animal that was attacked or threatened by the dog had breached an enclosure or structure within which the dog was kept in. Okay, a nuisance dog is if the dog does not rise to a level of dangerous, the select board may find it constitutes a nuisance dog, defined as excessive barking or other disturbance is a source of annoyance to a sick person residing in the vicinity, or excessive barking causing image or other influence, other interference. A reasonable person would find such behavior disruptive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment, or has threatened or attacked livestock, a domestic animal or person, but such a threat or attack was not grossly disproportionate reaction under all the circumstances. So we have to decide whether it's dangerous, nuisance, or none of the above.
So I'll begin. We should not, we should not, none of the above is not an option, in my opinion. I have many dogs, I've had many dogs. I'm well aware that, as Mr. Wilson pointed out, any dog is capable of anything at any time. You know, I own a 120-pound German Shepherd, and a 50-pound Golden Retriever. And the Golden Retriever is the one who has attacked the German Shepherd and put him in the hospital twice. So I don't think that, knowing about a dog, or thinking that it's cute, or sweet, or the breed has anything to do with what might happen on any day. I don't think that the Leos were irresponsible in any way. I don't think anyone could reasonably have assumed that a decent collar that you purchased at a store would break like that. I have a similar one, I walk when I walk him time. I don't think that this dog is necessarily, I mean, I'm hesitant to declare it dangerous, although, you know, but when you read that description, when you read that definition, it would be a dangerous dog under the specific definitions that you just read. I do think that if the dog has a harness and a properly fitted muzzle, and whether that's a basket muzzle, or some other muzzle type that the veterinarian can fit to it, I would rather that the Leos speak with a vet instead of going to a pet coy. I think that that would be sufficient, from my point of view, to remove the danger of this happening again.
I'd actually go a step further, if we were to go down that road. I would ask that the veterinarian prescribe, essentially, or measure, or whatever.
I guess that's kind of, that's sort of what I was saying.
Just not, I wouldn't have a Petco, because you could have a hard-time high school.
No, that's what I'm saying, like, the vet, not Petco, yes.
Before we go down, too far down, we should just go, is, do we agree by the definition it's a dangerous dog, or a nuisance dog? Because there's a whole section on here on the remedies that we can apply. Summarize those separately, but we, first, we have to go through, I mean, so, okay, I'll just tell you what the remedies are, and say that the dog has to be restrained. Let me finish.
I think Gary had something to clarify that, but you can- Yeah, I know, you read from the, from the dangerous dog side, but an attack also falls onto the nuisance.
But only if it's proportional, and it didn't, this one didn't strike me as proportional.
Well, that's what I want to discuss, because it attacked a domestic animal or a person, but such a threat or attack, not a grossly disproportionate action under all the circumstances. So, you know, I'm thinking of a dangerous dog, in that case, it is predatory, it's going after other dogs. It appears that this dog has been walked thousands of times, maybe barked like most dogs do at each other pass, some do, some don't, but hasn't aggressively attacked other dogs. So it's aggressively, like, trying to break leash every single time it passes another dog, right?
Right.
That's kind of, I'm having a little bit more trouble just throwing this dog into a dangerous category as opposed to a nuisance.
I also have trouble putting it in dangerous category. Ultimately, like, the remedy, to me, it doesn't matter?
I believe the remedy, yes. And I want to hear that part that Mark's gonna read, because I think a, we can, we can discuss a harness or a collar. I think the muzzle is probably the most important piece, because if a dog breaks away from you on a harness, it's going to do the same thing.
Yeah.
Whether you're on a harness or on a collar. So I just believe that, to me, the muzzle's the more important part to this. But I want to hear what the remedies would be on both.
So I'm gonna summarize them, because it's a whole page, but it's, so we can do some things such as saying the dog has to be restrained, that's one. It could be, we say the dog has to be confined to the owner's premises. That when removed from the premises, the person keeping the dog should be humanly muzzled and restrained. and restrained, harness however we want, right? That the owner or keeper of the dog provide proof of insurance, an amount not less than $100,000 insuring the owner or keeper against a claim lost, damage, or injury from acts of the dog. The owner, the dog, that the owner keep, the owner of the dog provide to the licensing authority information by which the dog may be identified. That the owner keep the dog, the owner of the dog provide evidence that a vet is of the opinion that the dog is unfit for alterations because of a medical condition. So examples, we can say between the hours of 10:00 and 7:00, the dog should not be permitted to go outside unattended. Other hours, it has to be on a leash, I mean, we can put whatever kind of restrictions on it, one.
Kind of to an animal.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, and that's whether we declare it a dangerous or a nuisance.
I think it's clear that this is a dangerous dog. I'm gonna push back a little bit. The definition of a dangerous dog is that either, without justification, they attack a person or domestic animal, causing physical injury or death, or et cetera, et cetera. But we've already, that first element is fulfilled. There was no justification. He attacked another animal, and he caused physical injury. She, pardon me. I, I don't think there's any question that, you know, under legal definition of a dangerous dog, Missy has fulfilled the conditions of that definition.
I tend to agree with Karen, based on the legal definition that I read, that it sounds like a dangerous dog.
I was leaning that way until I saw the last paragraph in 4B, the last sentence, attacked livestock, a domestic animal or person, such threat or attack was not a grossly disproportionate action under all circumstances. I guess we have to define the grossly.
Grossly disproportionate, but as far as, I mean, there's no testimony to the contrary, as far as I can tell, that Peaches was doing other, anything other than existing.
Passing another dog, another strange animal passing. I mean, what I'm saying is a dog that isn't trying to break out of its enclosure, breaking out of its yard, are not aggressively trying to attack other dogs.
They were both barking at each other, and pulling, pulling from each other.
I, I think, you know.
It sounds gross, the grossly.
It sounds grossly disproportionate.
Disproportionate to me.
To break leash.
I mean, the damage to the, the damage to the dog absolutely drives you to the dangerous dog. It actually cut into another animal, so it has that appearance for certain, but, I mean, a nuisance dog, a nu-, if finding a nuisance can, can be the same thing, if we're got the same discussion. What, what, what would be the different remedy to, in a dangerous dog, to a nuisance dog?
Maybe it's just that you can, that we, we are able to order up to euthanization for a dangerous dog. Maybe that's the only difference. I don't know. I, I don't, I don't have a, a strong feeling like we have to declare it as a nuisance or dangerous, as long as we, as the remedies are appropriate and enforced.
But I think we have to. I believe we have to, is that?
No, I mean, I don't, I, we, I would be okay with either.
Yeah.
Either identification.
In terms of remedies, if I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I mean, it's, it's, the remedies in terms of the things that have been proposed would be as if you were finding the dog to be a dangerous dog. So I think that, at least the things that I've ever been talking about, you first would need to declare the dog a dangerous dog, and then, and then come forward with the remedy of the.
Well, it says, if we deem the dog a nuisance, the hearing authority may further order that the owner or keeper take remedial action to ameliorate the cause of the nuisance behavior. So if the nuisance behavior is only defined as barking, then we have to declare it a dangerous dog. If the nuisance behavior is defined as attacking another animal, then we can declare it a nuisance dog, and ask that the remedial action be the same as we declare it a dangerous dog, and we need to have it on a, on a harness and a basket muzzle. Again, I'm not strongly advocating one way or the other. I, I don't.
I mean, we're, we're talking, the, the remedy sounds like the owner has already decided that that would be official.
Agreed.
Agreed upon, and it sounds like it's something that the.
So, yeah, I think we're kind of agreed on the, the remedy is, well, I, I think the remedy is a harness and the muzzle, and then we can decide whether it's either the vet or the animal control officer that approves that, right? But something along those lines, and then whether it's dangerous or nuisance, is, I'm kind of with Matthew that it's kind of semantics, though I do feel that the semantics lean more towards dangerous.
Fair enough, and I will, I will support dangerous.
Because it does seem grossly disproportionate.
Okay. I don't, I don't, yeah, that's, I agree with that judgment, that's, that's fine. But I want to make sure that the remedy is clear.
And that's what's more important.
Do you think actually the, maybe the animal control officer verifying that the muzzle is appropriate for the situation would be a good?
Right, a fitted harness and things like that, sure.
Yeah, but, but to have an independent party identify that the, that the harness and the muzzle are appropriate for the dog.
If I may, there's nothing to stop you from asking for both of that, and any animal control officer to, to, the animal control officer will be verifying what's been prescribed.
Okay.
I'd feel more comfortable with prescribed by a vet.
Okay.
Regardless of what category.
Okay.
Just the, the logistics of that, we can't order a vet to prescribe anything.
It's incumbent upon the owners.
Right, so the veterinarian would have to make the prescription, and then that doesn't, whatever the veterinarian prescribes doesn't necessarily coincide with what we deem is sufficient.
Well, we, we could, we could put a condition that a veterinarian.
Fitted harness.
Has, that, you know, has attested that the muzzle is appropriately sized, and is well-fitting, and that the harness is appropriately sized and is strong enough.
Yes.
And we get a letter from that vet, or from the animal control officer saying that, that would satisfy me, that, that, that it has been done to that. And I, I believe that the Leos will follow up, and they will, and that dog will wear the muzzle and the harness every time that she goes out for a walk from now on, because I don't think any, any wants this to happen again. Okay. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay. So Ryan, is that enough? Like, do you need more clarity on that?
I think it's okay, but I think, so, then, it's the question of the board is, determine nuisance or dangerous, and then if it, from that, what the, you know, what the remedy is, which for me is that the vet is going to independently review the, you know, that the harness and the muzzle are sufficient to restrain the dog, and would you, would you also want to have the ACO affirm that, or is that, is that, is just the vet's work?
I, I like the ACO confirming it.
The ACO's.
Okay.
I'm using the word prescribed, but if the, if the veterinarian signs off on it, that's, that's absolutely adequate, yeah.
And I would, I guess that, it sounds like the consensus is this is a dangerous dog. Unless Mr. Wilson wants to make an impassioned plea.
No, I, I think the dog is a nuisance. I, I believe that it, I said it when I started, all dogs have, most dogs have the capacity to do this. So knowing that, I believe that this dog isn't aggressively going out looking for their dogs, but.
I mean, every dog has the capacity, but this one did it, and I guess that's where it caught, that's where it crosses over.
Because it broke free of, so now it falls on the owner, and now we're remedying the owner's responsibility. So I, I mean, it sounds, it looks like you have three votes for the dangerous side, but I know it's semantics to some degree, I don't know if it's semantics to the attorney, if, I mean, if it's present, but I, I think it's, the remedy from the owner of the dog that was attacked is what is more important to me at the end of the day. Obviously, he cares about both dogs, and that's where I want to end this up, so I'm, I, without sitting here and seeing the, the dog, I see the damage that the dog did. Now, that day, that dog was dangerous, no doubt about it, but I keep falling back on, I, I just, most breeds and most dogs, most have that ability, so it's up to the owner to make sure that they, they understand that. So I, it's more of a nuisance to me as opposed to a dog that's just really out to get other dogs, because we've all seen those type of animals, for whatever reason, but, so.
So Karen, I kind of agree with you that this dog might not be dangerous, but it also was dangerous on this day, so you kind of have to say that, you know, this one day, it kind of, you know.
Certainly.
Set the course for the remainder of its life, for lack of, you know.
Right.
So, I do have a question for you, Ryan, on this. Do we have to also then prescribe, put in our remedy that the dog always has to be harnessed and muzzled off property, or on its outside, or?
Yes, I, I think so, yeah.
So we have to go that far?
Do we need to, or should, I would suggest that we include a time? You know, some sort of 30 days to, yeah, seven days, however long.
To comply.
For compliance.
Sure, sure.
Initially, I was thinking nuisance was, you know, neighbor's dog is barking, my baby can't sleep, you know, that kind of stuff, and it wasn't until I actually opened Master of Launch at the 1:40, and then did a little more digging while we're here, and saw that last, that last sentence, but grossly disproportionate. But, you know, attacking or a person or domestic animal, that's when I decided. Initially, I was thinking dangerous dog all the way, but I, I see the door open as a nuisance dog, so I can definitely see Gary's point. I don't think, we're kind of, again, semantics, we're already down the line with you in a way, as long as the remedy satisfies what we're looking to get accomplished, I'm good.
So, yeah, I don't know, legally, doesn't matter which way we go on this, whether it's a dangerous or a nuisance dog, if we're prescribing the same remedy. I'm, I'm, I mean, I don't really know what happened.
I think the safer thing, you know, I mean, I don't, that if you want to prescribe what you're discussing, I think it's the safer thing to do would be to proclaim the dog a dangerous dog.
Okay.
And flows from that.
Okay.
And then you also mentioned some sort of timeframe, Karen, so.
Do you want to ask the owners of the dog whether, what a reasonable timeframe might be for them to do this?
As soon as we can get a vet appointment, I mean, you know, we're up for this, it's not a problem.
Two weeks?
You know, once we can get a vet appointment, which is usually within a week or so.
Okay.
15 days.
Maybe some time to coordinate with the control officer.
Mr. Chair, this is, can be, it's not testimony, it just so happens, this is probably my 180th dangerous dog here, usually I'm defending them. So I just want to point out, the goal of the complainant was to make it safe, and I can tell by, not from the papers, but by, from hearing from them, these are engaged owners. The consequence of deeming the dog dangerous is just that she's young, if they want to board and train, if they want to go away, the dangerousness, it, it might prevent them from being able to do something like that. With a nuisance, I alluded to before, the board has the same power, the order of a nuisance or dangerous results in the same things. Under 157 little H, it's a, it's, 157 little H, then 157 capital A, and then 158, all three right after this 157 statute. You can seize the dog, you can euthanize the dog, the owner can be brought up on criminal charges for failing to comply with an order, they can be fined. So, so the, if we, if you were to go nuisance, I think Trish is fine with that, and I think you could still get it accomplished with the safety, and it's sort of like, it's sort of like, they've got their warning, and, and also with some of the things that you want to, like, have the, order a harness, and have the vet look at things. Under the nuisance, it's more of a catch-all where you can throw all that stuff in, not that these folks are going to appeal, but nuisance gives you a little bit more leverage to order some of these particulars. So I'm, I guess I am trying to influence the board just by educating you, because on this, it's, I only know one thing, so I chose to just know this, so not saying you don't know it, but sharing historically what, Matthew.
Thank you for that. Well, to the testimony, that was valuable, thank you.
Very good.
Nuisance it is.
Okay. And 15 days, is that acceptable to?
Yes.
Okay. 15-day term period for this?
If you're onto a issue, just let us know, let the board know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we need motions for, Ryan, or are we good?
Motion for a nuisance.
Yeah, so, so, I think saying is that we're declaring Missy a nuisance dog, that from, that the request is that a veterinarian would determine whether the harness and muzzle are sufficient to contain Missy, and that later the ACO will confirm that's okay, both the muzzle and harness, and that there's a 15-day period to come compliance with this requirement.
And that Missy will be required to wear these, like, outside of the premises?
Yeah, and then Missy's, right, thank you, and Missy, right, times Missy's out, we'll have, we'll have to wear this.
So moved.
Yeah.
Did I hear a second?
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Evidence of compliance, well, I mean, do we just want to have the ACO send her determination to us?
Mm-hmm, sure. That's all. Okay. As employee of the town, so.
So moved.
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
Not to be technical.
Just kidding.
But when you say outside the premises, even on their own property?
I'm sorry, outside of their prop-, I guess I should have said outside their property, thank you.
We're getting to a whole bunch of legal things. When you start on a recent property, it's a little different, because all dogs would tend to protect their owner's property, so it becomes a little bit different.
Okay.
Definitely when the dog is outside the owner's property, off the property.
Off, right, exactly, no, that's a given, okay. Roll call vote, Gary?
A yes to the motion on the second, or, correct, okay, yes.
Chuck.
I'm in favor.
Matthew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, so. So, Ryan will give you.
Yep, yeah.
A write-up of.
We have to write all this up, and we'll be in, we'll be in contact with you, and forward that to you as well.
Should we call the, the dog officer when everything's all set?
Yes, please.
Please.
Call her.
Yes.
How's Peaches doing? Good.
On the mend.
I'm, I'm, I'm very happy that there was a good outcome here. I think that everybody's been very reasonable. I understand these things happen, and I also understand how terribly obscene it is, and so I'm, I'm really glad that you are being responsible and taking care of what you need to take care of, and I, I pray it doesn't happen again, but thank you.
Appreciate your compassion, too, thank you.
Thanks for the education, Counselor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We don't, we don't want to have to see you again, so.
Go away and never come back.
Sure, of course. You make a motion, Mr. Chair, to close the hearing?
I thought we.
We closed it, actually. Yeah, we closed it after we stopped talking. Okay.
Bites, not bombs.
What are we at here?
So this is, they did this last year and a couple, for the past couple of years, right? This is just a bike-a-thon downtown.
Could you ask them to leave?
Yep.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to see you, Chair.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
No issues, obviously, from the fire department, I'm from the police department on this?
Uh, no issues.
Okay.
No.
Anyone have any comments?
Bites, not bombs?
Move that the Select Board vote to approve the request of Bites Not Bomb, the use of town roads for their bike-a-thon on Sunday, September 8, 2024.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, second by Karen, all those in favor?
Let's get that out on the website, so people know there's gonna be a bike or something.
Vote to open the special town meeting warrant for October 29.
Believe it or not, I have another.
Really? Way we go.
Yeah, right, right, so we included in the packet, so the schedule was in the packet, and this kicks off, kicks off the process for citizen petition. for citizen petitions for special town meeting, which in this case, it's 100, because it's special, it's 100 signatures, so. But this kicks off the process and asks for your approval.
Okay. Moved at the select board vote pursuant to Mass General Watch, Chapter 39, Section 10, and Town Code, Section 41-1, to open the warrant for the Tuesday, October 29, 2024, special town meeting forthwith, and to close said warrant on Saturday, September 14, 2024, at noon. Said town meeting to be held in the Charles Forbes K Gymnasium, Littleton Middle School, 55 Russell Street, Littleton.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, second by Karen, roll call vote, Gary?
Aye.
Chuck?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
And I'm in.
Aye.
Nagog Orchard update, including the RFP to lease, manage, and operate. So, Matthew and I and Ryan and Kathy and Jim, and I don't know who else we've had involved, town council have taken the, the old lease agreement and updated it to try one more time. And we are in the, I sent it around for comments a few weeks ago. It's been updated with new tax information and better maps, and the feedback of town council, and I think we're ready to go to post it later this week.
That's awesome.
So.
And it's going to go for 30 days?
Yeah, that's, that's the aim, we're talking a little bit about dates, so basically 30 days out, and we give a window for when we can receive questions, and then I think it's a day or two turnaround for questions, and then following Tuesday, we would open bids, you know, once, if any, are received, we have time, so.
So, the one, one other difference between the last lease agreement is the residence is not included in the lease agreement, since it's not inhabitable. In the prior lease agreement, it was also not inhabitable as a house, but it could be used as an office space. We've basically taken it out of the agreement altogether.
It's not habitable, not inhabitable. That's a double negative, means it's habitable.
It's not uninhabitable. We also took out requirements to run a farm stand, and there were a number of other smaller things.
You're kind of the widest step forward.
Yes, exactly, it's very, basically just lease the land, is what we're saying.
Give us some proposals, let's see what we got.
And I, Matthew, what, once the, it's posted, you'll send it out to, and it did the RFI responses?
Yeah, and actually.
We can work together on it.
I need to get in touch with Nancy, because the Orchard responses email's going to Brad and Amy, neither of whom are on the working group anymore. So, I'm, I would ask her to redirect it to me, and I also may need her to forward the old emails to me, because I have not, I've never got them.
Okay.
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 Would you like me to just get in touch with her directly?
No, I can take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
You'll update the Orchard website itself?
Yeah, yeah, I'll update the website when the RFP goes out. Okay.
Yeah, any other comments on the lease?
And thank you to Mark and Matthew for your work on that.
Okay. Moving on, vote to approve the side letter of agreement between the Town of Littleton and the Littleton Deputy Police Chief Patterson and Police Lieutenant Landry. So, this is what we were talking about earlier for their detailed pay.
Moved at the select board vote to approve the side letter agreement between the Town of Littleton and Lieutenant Doug Landry, and moved at the select board vote to approve the side letter agreement between the Town of Littleton and Deputy Chief Patterson.
Moved by Matthew, second by Chuck, all those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes.
I had no comments. Anyone else?
Just come up with it, Mark, go ahead and say.
I'm good.
Okay. Moved at the select board vote, approve the meeting minutes from the joint select board meeting with the Nagog Hill Orchard Ad Hoc Working Group on May 30, 2024, the select board meeting on July 8, 2024, the joint select board meeting with the Finance Committee July 15, 2024, and the select board retreat on July 17, 2024.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, second by Gary, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, second by Karen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Littleton.